Today is April 4th, 2016. We have a regularly scheduled meeting set to start at 7:00. But before that, we have nine folks who have signed up for public speak-out. So, we're going to do our best to get to each of you at this time. We have about 15 minutes, so each of you will get two minutes to speak. And the first speaker signed up is Mr. Kevin Sears regarding the rental registration ordinance.
Mr. President.
Okay, everybody, let's wrap up our conversations. We're going to give Mr. Sears our attention.
Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity. Giving an Irishman a microphone and a two-minute time limit is very, very difficult, but I will be brief. I spoke with Counselor Ramos today about ordinance 236, the rental registry, and he has indicated that he will be keeping that registry, that ordinance, in committee, which I'm happy about. There will be no vote tonight. But what I want to share with the entire council is, is I have representatives from Rental Housing Association of Greater Springfield with me, the Realtor Association of Pioneer Valley, and we will stand with Counselor Ramos on the steps of City Hall, asking the mayor to fully fund code enforcement and to fully fund the Law Department to be able to handle the issue of blight in the city of Springfield. It's counterintuitive to think that landlords want more money in code enforcement, but we recognize the value of removing blight. When the properties are blighted, it depresses the values of all properties. When properties are blighted, we have problems in the neighborhood. Cleaning this up will raise everyone up. We understand that, we will support that, but the fact that they're, the thought of having a rental registry, a telephone number for an owner, that will not remove the blight. What we need to do is enforce the ordinances that we have on the books to the fullest extent of the law, hold people accountable to keep their properties at the basic sanitary levels, and I think that we can remove much of the blight which Counselor Ramos has said that we have. Lastly, there's a fundamental flaw that I have with the concept of inspecting 100% of the units through this registry. And it's the fact that, let's just say it's 15 or 20% of the properties that are troubled or blighted, why would we waste the time, energy, and resources, the sparse resources of the city of Springfield, to inspect 100% of the units, when we should concentrate our efforts on the 20% or 15% that's bad? I don't know what the number is, I'm making the number up, but the fact is, we do not need to inspect 100% of the properties. Let's concentrate our efforts, let's give the resources to the code enforcement, Building Department, and the Law Department, so that we can enforce the ordinances that we have on the book. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope I stayed within my two minutes.
Thank you. Minute and 58 seconds, very good. Thank you, Mr. Sears. Our next speaker is Sarah Cox. Is Ms. Cox here this evening? Okay, we'll try her one more time at the end. Wesley James. Mr. James, regarding property-taking at Six Corners. Good evening, sir.
That's correct. Good evening. Yes, I provided all the councilors with copies of statements that myself and other property owners, business owners, have sent to the mayor, Chief Kevin Kennedy, Chris Signoli, Patrick Sullivan, Steve Malika, Kathleen Breck, Tina Marie Quaglio, Melvin Edwards, Richard Neal, and Benjamin Swan. This is in regard to the Central Street Ruth Elizabeth Expansion Project. My property at 4648 Hickory Street is one of those that's on the hit list, and the date on the first page of this notice is dated March 31st, 2015. That's over a year ago, okay? And the addendum, which is the second page, is the following December. So, we've got a period of eight to nine months where we heard nothing from the city in regard to this project. When I say "we," I'm talking about the people that will follow me to this stand, Anthony Impoco and Kevin Rockmaz. Just voices all of our concerns, and like I said, we've heard nothing back in regard to those concerns. In other words, the city is just going and doing what they do. We had no input into this, okay? And that's one of the main reasons I'm here. We have a petition that's circulating in the neighborhood with names of concerned citizens, people who do not want to see this thing happen. It's, what it's doing is eliminating five businesses and 15 to 18 jobs be lost. And I'll let my compadre speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Our next speaker is Anthony Impoco. I'm sorry about that.
That's quite all right, thank you.
What is actually your name?
It's Impoco.
Okay, thank you.
Like, like Mr. James has said, we're, have a petition of concerned citizens who are really, more or less, not opposed, but concerned as to what the ramifications of moving our businesses would be, and I'd like to pass that forward. And we've also included several notes on our concerns regarding this issue, and regarding the loss of business and the loss of fresh food to the community, the taking of Mr. James' property, and the removal of community assets. Okay? I'd like to pass this petition forward, if I may.
Give the petition to the clerk, sir.
So, with that, our concern, and the concerns of many of our citizens, I know both Kevin and some, quite a few of my clients are unable to, due to language barriers and also due to unfamiliarity with the process, be here to express their concern now. So, we've managed to gather as many as we could. With that, I'll yield to Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Impoco. Our next speaker is Kevin R. Not going to try. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Yeah, I own the property at 462 Central Street.
Okay.
And 416 Hancock Street.
Pull the mic, the mic, talk to the mic.
Okay. And my concern is, nobody never really talked to us about relocation. They say they relocate us all, and they put it off and off for months at a time, then we hear about it through the grapevine, there's a meeting, so we go, and they say they're going to help us with relocation, but nobody comes down to it. There's no places in the city to move us. Like, I've been here for over 30 years, okay? And my son's going to take you over when I'm done. And, like the park, they want to take part of the park. I see a lot of families in that park every year, at the Wired Park, playing basketball, having cookouts. You know, it's no need to make a road through there, when they got a perfectly good road going down Central Street. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
I got some petitions from people that want us to stay, and...
Thank you. Please bring the petition forward to the clerk, sir.
Mr. President, may I have a question?
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Williams, briefly.
Because we're not going to be able to question him during the actual vote, right? Which will be, that's a resolution, no, it's a special act. Just tell us, go back to, just tell us a little bit about, you're a small businessman, how many people you employ here?
Well...
What's the, what's the makeup of the people who work for you? And where would they go if you lose that spot?
Well, in my business alone, I employ three people, okay? I rent for a tire guy in my building, he gets like about 10 people, all from the neighborhood that work there. Some don't have cars, they walk there. You know, he's been there for a number of years now, and does the community good. And it's hard for, say, they're going to move us across town, then people are going to lose their jobs, because they have no way of getting across town. You know, like I said, all the people who work in my building and on my property, they're from the neighborhood. They're Spanish, black, white, you name it, we have them all there.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Susan Gorman. On the same subject. Good evening, Ms. Gorman. Name and address, please.
Susan Gorman, 18 Mattoon Street.
Thank you.
I grew up on Allen Street for 33 years, up the street from this incident, this area. I live on Mattoon Street, and before Impoco moved there, I had to pay someone to take me to West Hartford, to Crown Market, to get food, fresh meat, because I am allergic to all kinds of chemicals, fillers, and extenders in meat. He's the only person, except for West Hartford, the Crown Market's down there, that has fresh, chemical-free meat, and he also is a dollar cheaper than anybody else in West Hartford. And if he goes, I don't know what I'll do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Our next speaker is Bob McCarrill regarding Bliss House and the moratorium. Name and address, Mr. McCarrill.
My name's Bob McCarrill. I live at 96 Elliot Street and have been there for 39 years, since I moved there after being offered a promotion with the city of Springfield, and I have been happily ensconced there. So, I'm in favor of a residency requirement. You need more residents who work for the city who are like me. But I'm really here to talk about the demolition, the moratorium on demolition. As a former Springfield Historical Commission member, I can tell you the frustration the Commission has had time after time, when city departments would come before us for demolition, either under a local district, or under demo delay, or under what's called the municipal review protocol, and the Commission would say, "Have you offered the building for renovation with an incentive equal to demolition?" And the response was, "No." And the Commission would say, "Well, can you offer it with a rehab incentive equal to what you're going to spend to demolish it?" And the answer would be, "Oh, no. We're either using a demo bond, and it can only be used for demolition, or we're using CDBG money, and we've already told HUD that we're going to use it to demolish buildings." So, the frustration is, the city seems to come up with money to demolish resources and to decrease the tax base, and lacks somehow the ingenuity to come up with rehab incentives. So, I am in favor of this demolition moratorium while the city can explore more flexible options to offer, so that we try to rehab buildings first and demolish them only as a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarrill. Okay, our next speaker on the same subject is David Dabey.
David. David. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Gabey. I live in, at 1105 Worthington Street. I've lived in Springfield most of my life, actually lived on, in McKnight, most of my I'm here tonight to speak in favor of passage of the resolution for 180-day moratorium on demolition of National Register and National Register-eligible properties. I wish that this wasn't necessary. It would seem sensible, as Mr. McCarrill just pointed out, that we should be, all city officials should be working to maximize the tax base and to preserve our heritage. However, that's not what's been going on. I've made a few copies of a flyer I made up that I'll pass around later, but essentially, there's just four of many, many houses that we renovated in the 1970s and 1980s. Most of them were city-help. Many of them had a $5,000 matching grant. Just $5,000, that made it possible for people to work. That doesn't happen now. What happens now is, the city takes control of the situation, the minute a house is derelict, the city puts a deed restriction on it, or a court order that says, "No one can buy this house unless our plan is approved by us," and they don't know how to approve a plan. So, we get to court, and the city says, "We don't, we won't approve the plan," and the house, the house has to be demolished, because that's the only money that's available. Now, getting back to what Mr. McCarrill said, when the city says, "There's only money for demolition," that's because the city only, the city officials have only asked for money for demolition. It's entirely voluntary. We have community development block grants. President Nixon said, "Give a block grant to the city, the city can decide." So, the city officials, Kevin Kennedy or whoever, have decided, "We are going to allocate the money this way." They can change their mind in 30 seconds. They could say, "Well, we've just changed our mind, and we're going to allocate the money another way." They don't do it. This has been going on since the, since the, since the Control Board got here. And we've lost home after home after home, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Right now, the city's in the process of contracting for maybe $200,000 of demolition of historic buildings. We'd like to see your passage of this resolution stop that, and I will work with whoever. We have a receiver that was ready to renovate one of the houses. I shared his letter with you a couple, a month ago. He hasn't heard a peep from the mayor's office in response to his letter. Nothing. This, it's, it's as if the people in the Code Enforcement Department and the Housing Department don't care if they're running the city into the ground. So, with all due respect to people concerned about blight, a lot of that blight is being maintained by the city officials, and we'd like to see it stopped. This resolution will be a step on the way.
Thank you.
I also have a letter from one of the McKnight Neighborhood Council members or board members, supporting renovation of one of the houses, so I can share those.
Please bring the letter forward to the clerk. Thank you, sir. Okay, our next speaker is Taren Latta. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President, the City Council. I prepared a very brief, very short, one-page summary, pretty much outlining, sorry, I prepared a brief one-page statement of pretty much why I'm here for today.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone of the City Council and everyone enjoying, residents of Springfield. My name is Taren Latta. I'm a former firefighter who honorably served the residents of Springfield for the past five years. I myself have been a lifelong resident, born and bred here, right here in Springfield. I'm also a third-generation city of Springfield civil serviceman, as my grandfather, grandmother, and father have all retired from the Springfield Police Department. I'm speaking to you all this evening to inform you of the disproportional racial treatment that has been persistent and rampant within the Springfield Fire Department, spearheaded by its administration under Commissioner Joseph Conan, and substantiated by various members of the city of Springfield, Attorney Maite Parsies, City of Springfield Legal Department, William Mahoney, Director of the Human Resources, Danny, Danny Hall, Equal Opportunity Administrator, and numerous others behind closed doors, and the local 648 Firefighters Union, and covering up incidents such as mine and numerous others that there is very obvious a connecting threat of. Everyone, excuse me, everyone has not been treated properly and legally represented in all areas, especially African-American and Latino, and also veterans of all ethnicities within the Springfield Fire Department. There are currently a multitude of issues which numerous firefighters are facing, and I believe these issues have fallen on deaf ears and outright ignored for a very long time. I am urging members of City Council, state and federal legislators, also community activists such as the NAACP, Urban League, and the Veterans Affairs, also the Governor of Massachusetts, and lastly, Mayor Dominic Sarno, to get involved, not turn a blind eye and question what is really going on behind closed doors in the Springfield Fire Department. To the best of my knowledge, there are currently five firefighters, including myself, with open cases that have gone, that have been lodged and gone before the Mass Commission Against Discrimination. One of those cases is in Supreme Court, and there have been three others who've taken a course of action, of arbitration, for wrongful termination, and all three have successfully won their respective cases. And there are countless others who have gone through similar situations and are in fear of coming out to explain their situations for fear of ridicule, harassment, hazing, degradation, undue stress by other coworkers, financial loss, retaliation, up to wrongful termination, such as myself. By bringing these issues to light, Brother Firefighters, Lieutenant Randy Blake, Captain Mark Savage, who happens to be present this evening, and I, in verbal and physical contact, have held meetings with Representative Ben Swan, Jose Tassado, spoken with Counselor Justin Hurst, and numerous others. Their support in various matters have been monumental, but in order to take a deeper look and address the various layers of racism and other underlying issues that are present, it must be invested interest on the agendas of all members, for real action and real change to take place. Also attached with this, I have a copy of my MCAD complaint that I have sent to all the members of City Council and all the representatives in the state of Massachusetts, including Mayor Dominic Sarno and his aides, and also the Governor of Massachusetts. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll accept your testimony if you're willing to share.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Tina Labonte. I've been a resident of Springfield all my life, and that's 65 years of that life, and 46 of it, I've worked at Stop &amp; Shop. So, all our money's come right back into the city. And I'm retiring in May with Stop &amp; Shop after 46 years, but now I have a problem. I have family that works for Stop &amp; Shop, and we're in the process of negotiating a new contract, and all they want to do now is take back, take back. My daughter gave up a career in the dental field to work for Stop &amp; Shop, because it was the great offers that it gave her 15 years ago. Well, now they want to take that all away. They want to take away our pension, they want to take away our health and welfare, they want to hire new employees at a much lower rate. We have to stop this bleeding. This money comes back into the city. We need Stop &amp; Shop to survive. And I know all of you have to grocery shop in the city, so please, help us and get them to negotiate a fair and honest contract with all the employees, old and new. We got to keep this company alive in Springfield and all over Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Final speaker, if she's joined us, is Sarah Cox. Is Sarah Cox here tonight? Okay, seeing no Sarah, that closes the public speak-out portion of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, we're going to call the regular meeting to order. If you could please call the roll.
Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Counselor Shea.
Present.
Counselor Twigs.
Present.
Counselor Allen.
Present.
Counselor Rook.
Absent.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Here.
Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Counselor M. Williams.
Present.
Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Counselor Ash.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Tonight's moment of silence will be offered in honor of Martin Luther King Jr., who was assassinated on this day. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, councilors, we are joined here this evening again by Ludlow School Committee Member, Mr. Chip Harrington. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Harrington. Our first matter of business this evening will be committee reports. Do we have any reports of committee? Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I had, held my first committee on Elder Affairs meeting, where Counselor Williams, as well as Counselor Walsh were present, as well as Alex Martin, who is the Director of the Mayflower Senior Center in Springfield. We went over a few agenda items, some of those being in regards to increasing the publicity in the city based on some of the updates that we provide from the committee. We are looking to perhaps get a column in the Springfield Companio, which is the Department of Elder Affairs, to keep residents and elders informed of some of the activity that's being discussed in the meetings, in case people can't make it. As well as, we are identifying a working team of maybe three to six members from out, from throughout the Springfield community, not particularly from, you know, the same board, the same organization, that can kind of offer their ideas and represent their respective communities and organizations while being present. One thing that, being a grants writer, is very important, that we target some of the funding sources that seniors are eligible to receive. There's a lot of money out there, and if we have a more aggressive approach in targeting though, that, that, the funding sources in regards to, you know, the Golden Ager's and other 501(c)(3)'s, then I think we can do some good work. So, we are definitely looking at some funding sources that we can tap into. And increasing access across channels in regards to some of the community-based collaborations that we'd like to form. We want to create a tangible list of some of the senior center directors, staff, and volunteers to kind of better serve our seniors. You know, I've encountered the issue sometimes of looking for numbers and not being able to find them, because it's sometimes they're hidden, so with that list, hopefully, that can kind of mitigate some of that, some of those issues. And based on what the Committee on Elder Affairs is all about, and talking about elder affairs, one of the things we brought up was the PBTA cutbacks, or the potential cutbacks for the transportation services that serves up to and upwards of 500-plus seniors. So, we're going to be staying on top of that issue, and we discussed as a committee, bringing together general government, as well as maintenance and development, to sponsor a meeting with PBTA at the table to discuss what their plans are moving forward and what's been planned already. Now, moving on to the second committee report, the Young Professionals Subcommittee.
Okay, all those in favor of receiving their first reported committee for elder affairs say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, rookie mistake. In regards to the Young Professionals Subcommittee, where President Jay LaTorre is the president, we discussed the Restaurant Week, which is an initiative on the table right now. And Restaurant Week, in hindsight, for all of you that do not know, it's, it's going to be a week from April 21st to May 1st, where restaurants in the city of Springfield, not just downtown, now, we've expanded it further, will have the opportunity to select a prefix menu option from their, their restaurant of $20.16 in a representation of the year 2016, and that hopefully will drive some local business to those establishments in efforts to, you know, keep our local businesses on the strong foot. So, they've been, I have to commend the team for all of the legwork they've done thus far. They've been really, really taking this initiative by the horns, and I have to commend the team that's overseen by Jay, and I'm quite sure there's more to be said about that. Thank you.
Counselor Hurst?
I'll just say a few words as past Chair of the Young Professionals Committee. First of all, I want to commend Marcus Williams for the job that he's done in terms of transitioning to a leadership role with the YP Committee. At the outset, the YP Committee always wanted to find ways to attract families and young professionals to the city of Springfield, and I think Restaurant Week was just one way in which we were able to achieve that. We always said at the outset that we were going to expand Restaurant Week throughout the entire city and not just focus on downtown, and through the hard work of the YP Committee, along with the Business Improvement District, we've been able to do that. So, I commend Marcus, as well as the YP Committee and the BID for all of their hard work. And if we could suspend the rules, just so Jay LaTorre, I don't see Chris Russell here from the BID, so that they can just expound upon what we've just said, I greatly appreciate it, Mr. President.
Sure. Mr. LaTorre, members of the YP Committee, is Mr. Russell here? I did see him earlier.
I believe he's outside, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, why don't we have the YP members present, then?
Happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to members of the council. Again, my name is Jay LaTorre. With me tonight is Farah Rodriguez, and the Young Professionals Committee is also represented by Angie Stafford, Janice Assardon, and Carrie Francis Sullivan-Hussy. We are here tonight, again, to speak a little bit about Restaurant Week. As Counselor Williams mentioned, it runs April 21st to May 1st. It is the second year of Springfield Restaurant Week, where we'll be offering $20.16 prefix menu items over a 10-day period at local Springfield restaurants. Just want to talk of three very quick points. The first one, in our second year, Restaurant Week has expanded to just under 20 restaurants, so over 20 restaurants this year, so we are seeing some growth. Secondly, Restaurant Week is starting to see some holistic growth for other businesses in the community, such as this year, where City Stage and Symphony, Symphony Hall are offering $20.16 ticket prices during Restaurant Week. $20.16 ticket prices during Restaurant Week. So, that's a natural progression of business that benefits the city that we hadn't even anticipated in our first year. And third, just want to mention, as Counselor Williams and Counselor Hurst mentioned, that Restaurant Week is growing. In our first year, we really were centered on Metro Center, and in 2016, we will have restaurants featured in Metro Center, the South End, Indian Orchard, Boston Road, and Forest Park. And we're very excited, not only for this year, but years to come, to see how this can grow and really benefit not only businesses in the city of Springfield, but also residents, not just living in Springfield, but people that like to come to Springfield to dine downtown and see what Springfield has to offer. So, we're very appreciative of the support of the council for Restaurant Week in 2016.
Mr. Russell?
I think Jay said most of it. I just want to update him. We have 24 restaurants. And one of the hardest things is going to these restaurants and telling them we want them to participate, and we don't want anything from them. So, I think Northampton, I think we've surpassed Northampton's number of their Restaurant Week. So, we should be proud, and a lot of diverse cuisines are represented, and we're hoping to add another five or six before the event actually starts. So, thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Farah?
That was it.
Okay, Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't want to leave out any neighborhood. We only have one major restaurant in Esports Park, which is Nathan Bill. Are they part of this? Did anybody reach out to Nathan Bill?
We did reach out to Nathan Bill's, and not wanting to speak on behalf of the business, they seem that they are very excited to potentially join us in 2017. However, different obligations this year. They felt that this year might not be the most appropriate time for them to join.
Maybe they're wanting their expansion up there. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Peter, you get all that?
Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, last year, when Justin was in charge of this, I did attend Restaurant Week, and I thought it was great. And I think it's wonderful that you have expanded it, so that there'll be more restaurants and more opportunities for people. But it is definitely a win-win, and it's really great to see that you have a committee that really takes on something that makes a difference in the city of Springfield. So, I'll be there for Restaurant Week. I'm sure all my colleagues will be there, too.
Okay, April 21st to May 1st.
It was fun.
Okay? All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. I see Peter's writing feverishly, so Chris, you might want to go give him a comment, if you can. We've got to make sure we publicize this thing. Any other reports of committee tonight? Counselor Walsh, and then Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the Maintenance and Development Committee met on Friday to discuss and order taking, approving a special act authorizing the city of Springfield to convert parkland at Ruth Elizabeth Park for traffic improvement pursuant to Article 97, and to acquire and dedicate replacement parkland. Some people have spoken about this in the public speak. In attendance were myself and Counselor Bud Williams, Chris Signelli from the DPW, Pat Sullivan from Parks and Facilities, Kathy Tarpe from the Law Department, Peter Garvey, Tina, talking about housing, and some members of the neighborhood. There was a discussion about the process, what it would mean. This is the first step in what would lead to some taking of property, and it goes to the state, and then it would come back to us. Regarding the relocation, they would really not start, Attorney Tarpe said, they would not start relocation discussions until after the act actually passed in Boston. And Chris Signelli mentioned that this is a plan that has been in the works, the improvements in this neighborhood prior to the tornado. But, of course, after the tornado, they've worked on it even more. So, it's a controversial issue, and there's a debate about how much notice has been given and whether or not the improvements will be a betterment for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
No action was taken at the meeting. We wanted to wait and see what input we got at the council meeting and what we heard from the residents.
All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President, there is an item attached in Order Number 15.
Okay, we do have a request to take the UFCW Stop &amp; Shop matter.
Okay, not a problem.
Out of order, but if it's okay, we'll take that right out. Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna report for the Health and Human Services. We had a meeting last week, in attendance yourself. We had Pat Sullivan, and also from the community, Michael Ambusi from Arise. We also had Helen Colton, come towards the end of it, reporting on the fresh fish advisory from the Department of Health and Services of the state of Massachusetts. Just advising Pat Sullivan and myself, we spoke about that there is, we're gonna be testing our waterways in the near future, which in the next five or six weeks, we're still gonna be putting signs along our waterways, telling our residents that it's primarily up to the state for the second year in a row, that it's unsafe to eat from our waterways. I know we have a homeless community that does, you know, when it gets hot, comes around along the river, and a lot of people have fish fever and likes to, you know, go fishing and harvest and eat from what our rivers have. But we need to, you know, put emphasis on, you know, our health, and the mercury levels are high. From what I remember is that we're gonna have five different ponds in Springfield that are gonna be tested, but Commissioner Colton and Pat Sullivan, because they didn't know how much exactly the price was, once they got the price back, they're just trying to find out a way so we can find the funding to test some of these waterways. Until then, we're gonna put an advisory with signs along our ponds and our rivers, and hopefully that would just let people know pregnant women can't, shouldn't eat any of the fish, and if you are a healthy male, healthy female, that wants to eat from the river, they're advising that they eat one to two fish a month. And then on our second part of our meeting, we did have a conversation just on, you know, the process. Not necessarily, we couldn't talk too much about it because the host agreement wasn't done for the medicinal marijuana project that is coming to Springfield. And can't really talk too much about it, but we're just wondering, we were just talking and asking questions on, you know, how the process went. And Helen Colton is gonna send all of the councilors soon enough, a lot of how her committee and everybody else with the mayor's office conducted this, how they, I'm sorry, excuse me, how they rated each of the applicants for medicinal marijuana dispensary here in Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met twice in the last few days. The first meeting was on Thursday, March 31st, and at that meeting, Counselor Twigs joined me, and we had several people from the financial team, including Superintendent Warwick. At that meeting, we mainly talked about the capital plan, which was released last week, and everybody should have it in their email. There's a, the capital plan looks like this, and there's a PowerPoint that goes with it that looks, you know, this way, kind of thing. They both were sent to all councilors last week. And at that meeting, we basically talked through the capital plan and the rationale behind it, et cetera. We met again today, this afternoon, at 5:30 prior to this meeting, and talked about a memo that TJ sent around to all of us today. So, there's three documents that I'm referring to, actually four documents I'm referring to. One is the capital plan and the PowerPoint of the capital plan. One is the multi-year financial plan that was also sent to us last week. And today, we received a two-page memo from TJ called "Unexpended Bond Proceeds Transfer." So, basically, what's gonna be on the agenda tonight? I tell you these things as references, they're good to read, and they will relate to part of what we're talking about tonight, particularly the capital plan. This afternoon, or an hour ago, when we met, we went through the unexpended bond proceeds transfer. What that means is that there is over $8 million of money that was appropriated in bonds for certain projects, and the projects came in under budget, and you can't spend that, you can't just put that money back in the general fund. You have to keep it separate. You save $1 million on a project, you have to kind of put it to the side. What they've done is come up with $8.2 million, which has been, which is a collection of several different projects that came in under budget. The White Street Fire Station, South End redevelopment, school improvements, Forest Park Middle School, Putnam, and the Boston Road Project. The majority of the money came from over $3 million from Forest Park Middle School and over $3 million from Putnam. And the other million or two or so is a collection of smaller projects. And what they're proposing, which is on our agenda tonight, and what we discussed at 5:30 today, was the reallocation of that $8.2 million. It has to be spent on projects that are roughly in the same amount of timeframe that the bond was originally allocated for. You can't just go in the general fund and be used for whatever we want. So, they have suggested, Superintendent Warwick was there on Thursday, and the projects that are being recommended to spend it on are the vocal alert, there's four of them, vocal alert, system upgrade, I think that's in the fire department, school building improvements, central library repairs, and roads and sidewalks. Both school building improvements and central library repairs are each over $3 million. And so, what we did this afternoon was go through the specific items that TJ and his team are recommending. It's on the back of the two-page memo that we've got today. The 13 school building improvements.
You got that?
So, basically, on our agenda tonight is to approve the $8.2 million, to reallocate it to projects. And the projects that they're requesting are projects that come out of Priority A in this list. So, it's a kind of a, I wouldn't say it's a move, it's two different pieces to this item, is accepting the money coming over and then allocating it to the project that they've asked us to allocate it to. Counselor Twigs and I met on Thursday, and today, the committee, and while we didn't take a formal vote, we're both in support of the request, the item tonight. That's really what the report is, accepting of those four reports and also the reallocation, the potential reallocation of the money to the projects that are as listed.
Could I have?
Thank you.
All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Counselor Ramos?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, thank you. The Economic Development Subcommittee met on Thursday, March 31st, to discuss the proposed rental registration ordinance. We were joined by Counselor Adam Gomez, who is a member of the committee, and Counselor Tim Allen joined us, and Walsh. There were also several residents that were there and that spoke in favor of the ordinance, several different organizations from the city of Springfield that spoke in favor. And there were the members of the Rental Association who were present to speak against the ordinance. Just want to, just for the record, just want to make it clear that what we're talking about here is an ordinance that costs 83 cents a month. It's 83 cents a month. You know, there's been a lot of misinformation out there about how much it's actually going to cost, but we're talking about an ordinance that's gonna cost 83 cents a month. And, you know, one of the reasons why this is important for our city is because of what we heard during our public speak-out with blighted properties. You know, once we, if we don't get a good handle on rental properties across the city, those properties lead to blight. And once we have, and, you know, we have an issue with absentee landlords across the city of Springfield. So, hopefully, through this ordinance and through its implementation, we'll be able to address the blighted property in the city and also the absentee landlords in the city of Springfield. One of the other bigger issues that we want to address with this ordinance is the fact that a lot of our departments spend a lot of time and resources trying to find the actual owners of properties. And so, some of the language that is in the ordinance addresses the classification and actually, during the registration process, is required to put the actual owner of a property, not a corporation, not an LLC, but the actual owner. And that in itself is gonna save a lot of time and resources from the city of Springfield for our departments. And, you know, after giving it much thought, and after discussing it with some of the people that were present at the Subcommittee meeting, I decided that it would be best to leave this matter in committee. I hope to have one more Subcommittee meeting, at least one more, prior to bringing it up for a full vote to the council. And look, if anybody has any questions or concerns, I encourage you to come to the Subcommittee meeting. We've been discussing this for two years now, and I'm just hopeful that if anybody has questions, if you have concerns, bring them forward to the Subcommittee meeting so that we can work it out, work out the kinks in committee, and hopefully come out with an ordinance that's gonna be beneficial to all the parties involved. And so, at the appropriate time, Mr. President, I just want to make a motion to leave that matter in committee.
Okay. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Any other reports of committee this evening?
I'm just.
Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, we, why don't we take items one through three, if we can, these petitions?
Did you want to take the order?
Will the clerk please recognize the counselor in seat number five? Counselor Ramos, did you have a motion to take item number 16 out of order?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to take, make a motion to take item number 16 out of order.
Okay. Is there any objection? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call item number 16 regarding UFCW.
This is a resolution in support of the UFCW, item number 16.
Counselor Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is a resolution that I put together in support of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1459. All of us have either read in the newspaper or seen in the media outlets that these folks are currently in negotiations with Stop &amp; Shop supermarket company, and the negotiations have been going on for some time now without a resolution. Having been a union member myself for the past 14 years, I know what this entails. I know how frustrating it can get to be at the negotiation table and to be working without a contract. And so, I thought that it was important for us, although we, you know, city leaders and as representatives for the city of Springfield, we don't have any direct authority over the private sector, what we can do is advocate for the folks that are working in the private sector to get their fair share. And that's what we're doing here with this resolution tonight. You know, these folks are not asking for a lot. They're not asking for $100,000 salaries. They're not asking for corporate-sponsored vehicles, things like that. They're asking for fair wages. They're asking for benefits to be able to take care of their families. They're asking for safe working conditions. And, you know, I don't think that that's too much to ask. And so, I just wanted to go on record, as a whole, to support these folks in their negotiation. In the city of Springfield alone, there are three Stop &amp; Shop stores, and all together, we're talking an estimated 500 jobs that, you know, will affect here in the city of Springfield. And so, I'd like to read the resolution into the record, and I'd also like to give a representative from 1459 the opportunity to speak and to give us an update on how the negotiations are going. So, the resolution reads, "Whereas, the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1459 was established in 1938 and is located at 33 Eastland Street in Springfield. And whereas UFCW 1459 represents the interests of 5,000 hard-working men and women in Springfield, Western Massachusetts, and Vermont. And whereas UFCW 1459 has 1,500 members employed by the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket company. And whereas the parties are currently in the negotiation process, and whereas the mission of UFCW Local 1459 is to improve the lives of working families and to bring economic justice to the workplace and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Springfield City Council stands in support of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1459, who represent the interests of many hard-working families in our community. And be it further resolved that the Springfield City Council urges representatives of the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket company to reach a fair resolution that appropriately values their dedicated workforce." And so, with that, Mr. President, I hope that my colleagues will support this ordinance, this resolution, and I hope that we can give them an opportunity to, Mr. Tyrone Housie, to give us an update on how the negotiations are going.
Sure.
If that's okay.
All those in favor of suspension of the rules to hear from Mr. Tyrone, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none. Mr. Tyrone?
Well, good evening, city councilors. My name is Tyrone Housie. I'm the Secretary-Treasurer for United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1459. I'm also a union rep, and I'm also a former rank-and-file member for 17 long years. I'm speaking on behalf of our membership. We represent about 1,500 Stop &amp; Shop workers throughout the Pioneer Valley. We are... We are, our contract expired with Stop &amp; Shop in February, February of this year, the 27th of February, and we're in some tough negotiations. This is a company who is owned by the Dutch, who is in the process right now of acquiring Hannaford's grocery stores. Now, with this acquisition, they're looking to make up this loss off the backs of our workers, off the, excuse me, off the back of our members. And this cannot happen. Our members are hard-working folks, they live in the community, and this cannot be tolerated. We're asking for your support to support this resolution, and as we continue our negotiations, we ask that all city councilors, please support this resolution, and that's really all I have to say. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any councilors? Okay. Seeing none, all those...
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to that, please.
Okay. Clerk, please add Counselor Bud Williams as a co-sponsor. Any other councilors? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of passage of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution passes unanimously. Why don't we have a 30-second recess to allow these folks to exit quietly? Okay, Mister Clerk, I'm gonna call this meeting back in the session. We have a motion from Counselor Walsh to take item number 15 out of order. Are there any objections? Seeing none. Object. Okay. Counselor Allen objects. So we will go back to the regular agenda. Mister Clerk, if we could please hear items one through three. Okay, folks, listen up, we're back in session. Mister Clerk?
These are petitions for conduits through Pleasant Street, Prospect Street, and Locust Street.
Okay. All those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, Mister Clerk?
Counselor Allen objected to taking it out of order.
This is an order accepting a grant, a mass in motion, $464,350 and 350.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you. This is our mass in motion grant. It is our partnership with Caring Health Center, the Department of Elder Affairs. All of you probably saw where the planning department used $60,000 to do wayfinding. That came from this grant. It is a health and wellness grant, working with our partners.
Okay, any questions for the Commissioner?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Grant is approved. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number five, Mister Clerk?
Item number five, a highway safety sustained enforcement grant for $125,000.
Good evening, Sergeant.
Mr. President, councilors, Brian Elliott, Springfield Police Department. The grant that you have in front of you is a sustained traffic enforcement grant. We're one of a handful of communities in the state that are eligible to apply, and this is our third year, which we'll participate in. So I'd ask you to accept this grant, and that'll put us on the street over the summer.
Any questions on the grant? Okay, thank you, Sergeant. All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number six, Mister Clerk?
This is an order to repurpose donation funds in the amount of $24,105.
Okay, all those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seven?
This is an order to receive state aid for the public libraries in the amount of $12,805.55.
All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight?
FY161 Care Funding Grant Increase of $100.
All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine?
This is an order for transfer of unexpended bond, of unexpended bond proceeds.
Mister Plant?
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, the council. The order before you is to transfer just over $8.2 million of unexpended bond proceeds. I sent out a memo earlier today to give the background of all the projects that we're looking to do with the funds. Just quickly, the vocal alert system is an upgrade for the fire department, the school building improvements of about $3.8 million, central library repairs of $3.9 million, and then just over $100,000 to go from Boston Road to other road projects. We're asking the council to support the transfer tonight.
Any councilors? Counselor Allen?
Yeah, as I said in the committee report, Mr. President, there's two parts to this versus, well, it comes all as one package, the way it was put together. Does 8.2 million need to be repurposed onto the projects, and the recommended projects are on the back of the two-page report from today, that came out today. So, it's a good use of, this money can't be, if there's any question about why not put the money back in the general fund or anything, can't be done. When you, when you offer bonds for projects and we end up not spending all the money on the projects, the bond, the money was offered as a bond, and the projects that you come up with to use that money that's left over needs to be roughly in the same timeframe of usage. If it's a 20-year bond, you need to have projects that roughly are the same amount of time. So the team went through that, basically, got some big projects, the general library repairs, where there's ADA compliance issues, and 13 school projects. Superintendent Warwick was at one of our committee meetings to discuss those, and a couple other projects. That's what the background is.
Okay. Any other councilors?
Yeah.
Counselor Williams?
Yeah, thanks TJ. Thanks, Counsel, nice report. Just, I'm trying to really understand this, TJ. What are the, you sent this on an email, which is very difficult to look at on email. It just is. I finally got a hard copy tonight, which is a little more productive, I think. What are the projects you're identifying that putting the money back into?
The projects that the funding's going towards?
Yeah.
We have a vocal alert system upgrade at the fire department for approximately $400,000. We have $3.8 million going to school building improvements that the superintendent's here to talk about, in terms of the projects that are outside net school spending that need to get done, kinda life safety issues or quality of education issues. And then we have the first phase of the central library repairs. We have about $15.1 million worth of work that needs to be done in our central library branch, and about $3.9 million is Phase 1, and that'll do the quadrangle, the ramp, the front steps, and the roof.
I understand, everything needs to be done, and dollars are real tight, understand that. I'm just totally confused that when money's left over, there was a time when the mayor would come into the council and we'd look at some projects. Now, Adams Playground hasn't been done, that needs to be done. Calhoun has not been done in years. We got Johnny Appleseed, I think they've done a little work on it. Harriet Tubman Park, over. How come some of this money can't be used to put back into the urban part of our community? This is, this, it's going right back into the city projects again. I mean, people, we gotta figure a way, TJ. And I thought last time we wanted to put that, the money left over from the Putnam Bond, you're gonna put back into the steps of City Hall, which you're doing the same thing anyhow.
Right.
How come we can't figure a way to put the money back into some of these parks that have not been done in years?
Yeah. So Counselor, answer the question really, well, twofold. One is the city council sends a representative to the capital improvement committee where all this, all the projects are vetted. That's answer number one, is that there's process through that, and then they could also let us know. We've added your parks to the capital improvement plan.
So no one ever talks about doing the parks in neighborhoods?
No, I mean, we talk about it all, Counsel, we talk about it all the time. The issue that we have here is this is 20-year debt that needs to go for 20-year projects, and a park is not a 20-year project, the way Massey and Lara...
You guys are very smart guys, you know how to do a lot of stuff, and I'm sure you could figure it out. I mean, I get calls all the time on these things, and I'm embarrassed to ride down Wolverham Road, I really am. For years, it's years, not much, years. Last election cycle, some candidate made a big issue out of it. I mean, we have to take care of the inner city at some point in time. It's gotta be, at some point, there has to be a commitment. These parks need to be done. And they need to be done at once, not two years from now, not three years from now, they need to be done with this cycle. And I'm looking on this thing, and it's, there's nowhere in sight.
Oh dear.
Uh, what, 2017 or 2018?
Right, the capital improvement plan that you're looking at now that was released on March 30th, the appendix in the back is where all the projects are listed, and if it doesn't fit the criteria, the way the rubric is written, it's not necessarily gonna get to priority A status where all these projects are chosen from. So there's a whole process we go through to vet the projects, check them against everything else, and leverage additional resources.
And they just never, ever make it to the top.
With all due respect...
With that formula, and with your rubrics that you use, they'll never look at them. That's what you're actually saying.
No, you're putting words in my mouth. And what I'm saying is there's a process we follow that we leverage additional grants and different, additional opportunities. If you look at that, you'll realize that we spent $50 million to leverage $340 million worth of revenue.
Yeah, we're buying for that, I understand, schools and buildings, we do all that.
I'm just saying, there's a process that we go by.
But I still wanna help the little people at some point in time.
I'm not saying we're not, I'm saying this, this just got into the capital plan, what, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, and we just printed it, so this is something that's gotta come, we need to know of these projects that have gotta be on the list.
We've been talking about Adams for a while, it hasn't been three months ago. And Calhoun has been years ago. I mean, if someone doesn't, doesn't remember that, I'll, you know, ring the bell or something. I'm very, I'm gonna stay on that. There's no way to kinda like work what you do and get those, get Pat Sullivan some money so we can get those parks done? 'Cause it's gonna be a long, hot summer. The summer's coming. You've got a couple months, the snow might fool you, but the summer's coming. And those parks, the gates are all broken down now. The thing is really falling apart.
Now, we have funds for the traditional maintenance, or the deferred maintenance, and we have, if we have to do larger repairs, it's gotta be through authorizing debt. So it's just a matter of how much these projects are truly worth when they come back from our designers of, does it cost? $100,000, which is a very different conversation than $1 million, and those are the conversations we vet out in the process.
I know the City Hall steps are very important, I understand that. But half the people never come down to City Hall, they never go up those steps.
Right.
They never do. So when you say, and I'm not saying do Adams or Calhoun or Harriet Tubman, they ride by that on a daily basis. City Hall steps, they may never, ever come up though. They send their taxes in, but they might not come down here. So I just wish you would go back to the drawing board and figure a way to incorporate those parks into your rubrics, you call it. Very important, those are small, small issues. Okay? I just, that's just me, I can't, I can't vote for this, not in this form.
Counselor Hurst?
Just a quick follow-up. How else would you have fixed the city library if you didn't have these funds? Where would you have found those monies?
So, the good thing about having unexpended bond proceeds is it would've been authorized through debt, and would've crowded out other projects in the capital plan based on the debt affordability analysis that we submitted in, end of January. So, having the $3.9 million left over, and then finally getting back our detailed study on the repairs of the central library, we were able to match it up nicely with Phase 1 of what needs to be done at the central library. So it would've been, it would've been authorized debt, we would've asked the council to authorize debt otherwise.
So why can't we do the same thing for the parks?
Because we have a process to go through, and it's, once we vet out the true cost of what the parks are, to go through the open space ban that Pat Sullivan's putting together, plus the actual cost, and we can't just authorize debt till we know what it costs.
So can we start that process, TJ?
Absolutely. This process is already underway.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking of the capital plan, you can probably guess what I'm gonna ask you, TJ. Talking about a project that's been out there for a long time, and the costs keep escalating, what is happening with the Campanile?
Yeah, that's a great question, Counselor. The Campanile, as you know, the price tag is around $23 million.
Yep.
And so, we actually talked internally about whether or not it made sense to put some of this funding towards it, and in the end, we need to spend this funding for the unexpended bond proceeds within two years of when we sell the debt. And so that's why we can't just have it sitting in our books, waiting for the rest of the funding to come along, so we need a broad-based strategy on how to address it long-term.
TJ, how is that capital campaign going for the Campanile?
I'll have to get back to you. I know the committees, I think, believe a committee's been appointed, I'm not sure any progress that they've made, but I'll have to get back to the council.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the transfer of unexpected bond proceeds? Okay, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, there's been an objection by Counselor Williams, so we're not gonna pass this in one night tonight. But we will take a roll call, and it'll appear on our next agenda pursuant to Rule 19. So, Mister Clerk, roll call is required. This is the transfer of unexpected bond proceeds. Rule 19 says that we cannot pass a transfer of this kind with just one reading in one night. You hear me frequently say, will we suspend it? If one person objects, then the rule applies, so therefore it needs two readings.
On the first, on the first vote for the transfer of unexpected bond funds, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Counselor Shad?
Yes.
Counselor Twigs?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Counselor Bud Williams?
No. No.
Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Finn? Yes, more than sufficient, matter passes. Second reading will be at our first meeting in May, Mister Clerk. Next item, item number 10.
Item number 10 is an amendment to City Ordinance Chapter 390 regarding taxi and livery vehicles.
Okay. So... Anybody here to speak in favor? Counselor Rook?
This is a amendment to existing ordinance...
Don't wanna hear from you.
Amendment to existing ordinance, ordinance which would make it more fair for the taxi drivers. Many have approached, someone was here in the council, I think it's a very simple solution, or encouraged that many, so...
Any questions from the council?
No.
Okay, we have been asked to make one slight amendment, and the request comes to amend Section 4, Paragraphs 2 and 3, where it states operators, to replace those terms with, where it says owners and operators, excuse me, to replace that with owners, operators, and drivers. Is there, okay, so motion made by Counselor Rook to...
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, amendment passes. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, I just wondered where the, amending the city ordinance comes from and who is sponsoring it, and why nobody but Counselor Rook is here to speak on it? Isn't there somebody from the city that should've been here?
Attorney Days?
Good afternoon, good evening, actually. I am actually pinch-hitting for Attorney Maria Popolo, who usually represents on behalf of the city the Taxi and Livery Commission. I would just give this information to the council, that in fact, this issue was visited by the Taxi and Livery Commission. Present, we have one of our commissioners, Mr. Robert Jones, on August 12, 2015. It was at that time that it was decided that the commission would defer any ordinances until the city had acted, I mean, I'm sorry, the state had acted with respect to TNCs. I will tell the council that it's an active, very active House bill. Most recently, it was heard and amended on March 14th. I don't have a further date, however, but as I said, just looking over the history of it, it's moved progressively along over the course of the last 16 months or so. I will further represent, just on my reading, that Governor Baker is a proponent of regulations of TNCs. The concern of the city, if they act prior to the issuance of a state regulation, is that, of course, we would be overridden if it was inconsistent with the state. As such, the Taxi and Livery Commission, just for your information, has decided... As such, the Taxi and Livery Commission, just for your information, has decided to defer until the state has acted.
Okay, any other counselors?
If, if they are deferring, does that mean that we should maybe put this in committee?
Uh, Mr. Solicitor?
Um, Edward Pacula, city solicitor. Um, Maria Pupolo sits as my designee on that board. Attorney Days is our director of licensing, so she works very closely, uh, with the Taxi and Livery Commission. There's one other piece, a case just came down from federal court, uh, this weekend because Boston had enacted some regulations, uh, and the federal court has struck down Boston's regulations, and, uh, has given the city of Boston six months to, um, uh, come up with a new proposal. Uh, if I may, uh, I would suggest that it is probably more prudent, from a legal perspective, that we defer on this, that we have some time to, uh, review that case from the city of Boston, uh, and perhaps, uh, we can have, prepare a report for you, um, as the best way to go forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counselors?
I agree.
Is that a motion to committee, Counselor?
Yes, I'll make a motion to send it to committee.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh to refer this matter, uh, to committee, seconded by Counsel Williams. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to committee, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, this, uh, matter will be referred to the... General Government Committee, chaired by Counsel Allen. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 11, amending Chapter 49 of the Springfield City Ordinances to establish the Bliss House Historic District, Second Step.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this? Okay, we've already passed First Step here, so we're gonna do Second Step to Committee on Enrollment, and then we'll take Third Step later this evening. All those in favor of Second Step referral to Committee on Enrollment, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? The ayes have it. Take Third Step at the end of our meeting. Item number 12, Mr. Clerk?
Item number 12, First Step, a, uh, an amendment to the, um, to Article, to the Springfield City Ordinances, a Poet Laureate Ordinance.
Okay. Anybody here to speak on the ordinance?
Sponsor is Counselor Rook.
Are there any objections to deferring this matter until Counsel Rook returns?
No.
Okay, so we're gonna table that until Counsel Rook returns. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, item number 13.
An ordinance amending Chapter 73, Article 2, Section 13, Springfield City Ordinances. So this is, um, oh, this is an override of the mayor's veto.
Any counselors?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and, um, I hope we can deal with this tonight in a very responsible manner. Uh, this has really become a political football with, um, the mayor, um, I think he owes his counsel of apology, saying that we're vilifying the fire department, which, no uncertain terms, we have a great fire department, we all know that we have a great fire department, many of them, uh, live in the city of Springfield. But here, we're dealing with the waiver tonight, Mr. President. And out of all of this, lo and behold, we find out six district deputies have been living out of the city since 2008. Now, according to Mr. Mahoney, I believe that when you negotiate with these individuals, that they said they would move into the city. I believe that. I wasn't at the table, so I don't know if that's to be true. But that came out of this, Mr. President. So they don't have waivers, so they should be living in the city of Springfield, and that, deal with that a different day. I think they should move into the city, if they don't move into the city, uh, you know what action you should take. This deals with waivers, and the mayor and his ability to have waivers. If I give you a historical perspective, Mr. President, back in 2009, when Mayor Sarno served on the Control Board, the Control Board, remember, enacted this waiver. It was the Control Board that put this in place, not this body, not the mayor, the Control Board. The mayor was on the Control Board. He voted against granting waivers. I think it was him and James Morton were the two, Bill Foley was council president, I think it was 3-2. So he voted against waivers at that particular vote. So fast forward, and lo and behold, 30 days after that waiver, the personnel director was hired, in 2009, after this waivered, the mayor granted. He votes against waivers, it's granted, he grants a waiver. So let's, uh, fast forward to today. Mr. President, we need residency. Uh, received many phone calls, and just walked through the community. People were very excited that we're putting Springfield first. Uh, if you read the article yesterday in the Boston Globe, they've been doing these articles, they did an article on Springfield, which I thought was pitiful, but they did the article. And he talked about the median income in Springfield being about $35,000. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. And the, uh, median income other places, $68,000. People who live outside the city of Springfield, most of those are in the high echelon jobs, they're in a high position, they're not the rank and file. A lot of the rank and file live in the city. Code enforcement just, Mr. Mahoney did a good job negotiating that contract with the code, the nurses, they all voted to live, staying to the city of Springfield. So if we can get folks to move back into Springfield, invest in Springfield, buy homes in Springfield, our employment rate is going through the tubes. The state is four, our employment rate is eight or nine percent, wherever that number's probably higher, a lot of people just don't report anymore. So this residency is very, very important to the psychology of the people in the city, because they've felt that they're being left out and left behind, and don't have a fair share. And if you look at the jobs at the top, there's no diversity, no diversity at all, doesn't reflect the city, at all, doesn't reflect the city. Hey, they're probably all good gentlemen who are district chiefs, probably great guys, but they choose not to live here. I take, subject to that, Mr. President, I really do, I take real offense to that. That says a lot of stuff, we don't think it does, I think it does. No diversity at the top, they're not ever gonna live in the city, so if we don't move and make folks live in the city, these folks have been here for 15, 20 years. Folks who, cities becoming browner and browner and browner and browner, will never have an opportunity of this generation, it'll be another generation. So residency is very, very important for a lot of reasons. Stabilizes the neighborhoods, stabilizes the community, people, uh, you know, our tax levy, we're at two and a half, we're at the ceiling, we can't tax anymore, we have to create growth, and we have a lot of great homes in North End, South End, East Forest Park, Atwater, you, you say it, 16 acres, Indian Orchard, that I would say would make a pretty good situation for folks to live in the city. Now, I don't know if you folks have heard, I've heard from people who, who live in the city, who have called and said, "You folks, please stay on this, it sends the right signal." Now, Mr. President, we don't enforce residency here. I just got a text or email from somebody today, uh, Page Boulevard, they're interviewing people, great. They're interviewing people, they're hiring people, didn't talk about any diversity, didn't talk about who they're hiring, I know what's gonna happen. If this city is any example of what's gonna happen with the fire department, then gentlemen and ladies, we need to pay real, real attention, because folks in the city are not playing by the rules, they're not sharing in the wealth. It's almost a plantation mentality, come in the city, take the money, and then they go out. And they leave, and they take a good hunk of our pay with them, and oh, by the way, on the way out the door, they badmouth the city. Don't live there, it's not good, why would you even stay there? You know, this is, this is, this is, this is, this is real talk, real talk. I've had firefighters call me, police officers have called me, teachers. We live here, we believe in this city, we don't mind if they lived it and say things about the city, maybe we, you know, in one ear and out the other, but this is real bad. This body is the last line of defense, and the mayor, shame on Mayor Sarno for not enforcing residency, not making people play by the rules. They said they would live in the city, they, this system is so broken, Mr. President. I always want to commend, you tried to do this a few years ago, we had the ordinance, ready to go, we couldn't get it done. Hopefully, reasonable minds will come to an agreement tonight, that this is good for all of us, all our constituents. All our constituents need a fair share in this, they need to, at least young people growing up to say, "I could be, I could be a district chief one day, I could be superintendent one day, I could be a, uh, commissioner one day, I could be a department head one day." But if they look out and don't see anybody that looks like them, this is, this is 2016, this is not 1958, not 1948, this is real, this is a real, real big vote, and everybody has to vote their conscience, and some people don't believe in residency, and that's just the way it is. But I just hope that we can vote this tonight, and I hope the mayor, that will, once the, if this veto was successful, that the mayor would support this, Mr. President, so we can sit down at the table and work this out as, as adults, and not have this bagging forth in the newspaper. That's the worst way to run a railroad, is through the newspaper. We just sit down at the table with the mayor, you, people of this body, ladies, and let's come up with an agreement on this, the, the residency, uh, the diversity, uh, get a compliance officer, and that's the piece you pushed, Mr. President, there's no compliance to this. If there's no compliance, it's not gonna get done. This is the same thing with MGM, we don't have a compliance officer at MGM, we don't have a compliance officer at Page Boulevard, we don't have a compliance, who's gonna mine the railroad? Who's gonna mine the railroad? They can't self-report, Mr. President, and we went down that road all, too many times, they're all great guys, they'll, you know, they, they, they shake their hand, they, they laugh, they joke, they party, oh, they love you, they love you, but when it comes to cut the pie, you're never in the room. So I just hope that us as an organization, we would vote this tonight, and send a clear message to the mayor, that we're standing on, on the side of the citizens of Springfield, Massachusetts, and Springfield comes first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to start off to say that I was, I'm a native son of Springfield, Massachusetts. I was born in Bay State Medical Center, first place I ever lived was in the Edgewater Building as a kid. I grew up in Plainfield my whole life, and I'm proud of that. I'm proud to represent a neighborhood that, you know what? I bled, I sweat, and I get emotional, because this is real. This is the first time, and sometimes I look at signs and I say, "Wow," it blew my mind that today we're gonna be taking a vote on Dr. King's birthday.
Oh, well.
You know? And honestly, I understand some people have, you know, reasons why to say no, but today, the reason why to say yes is because not nobody that leaves this city after they, that they get their paycheck, vote for any of you. Not one of you. Not, not one vote. And fact of the matter is, is that, the reason why I came to this point in life, you know, was that I had to tell myself, what was I really doing for my people? What was I really advocating for? Just, just so recently, you know, we advocated for a lot of stuff in the, uh, with the Justice Reinvestment Act, with the fair share tax, we have a lot of great things that have come to the city of Springfield, a lot of economic development, and one thing that we have to make sure is that we're investing in our youth, we're investing in our future, my sons, your sons, your grandsons. And if, it's, it's the human thing to do, it's, this, this residency issue, it's not saying that they're not qualified, but every time we, I read the news, and they said, "Well, we want the best," and that's understand, Springfield deserves the best, but when you continue saying, "We deserve the best," you're anilating, uh, any, I'm sorry, you're alienating our people, saying that they're not qualified. And you, and I understand, fine, I'm a young, I'm a young soul, you know, I'm an old soul, like, I'm a rookie, but you know what? I wasn't born yesterday. And fact of the matter is, no, I don't want to see nobody lose their job, we're not trying to be their enemy, vilifying, are you, no. But the fact of the matter is, I'm not trying to be your enemy, I just want you to be my neighbor, right? I want you to understand, I want you to understand that, I want you to understand that, that you know what? That there's a lot of people that are undocumented, that live in our city, that are looking for that American dream, that if we can't stand up right now, and it has nothing to do, I have tremendous respect for the mayor's office, I have tremendous respect for every single one of you guys, but today, no disrespect, you might lose my respect today. And I am not here to, to badmouth anybody, because all of you guys have been instrumental in trying to mold me and help me in the last four months, but today, this is about the people you live next door to, not to the people that you shake their hand and say, "Well, I'll see you, see you in a couple of days." The ones that you wake up every day saying, right, when you pick up your newspaper, "Hey, how you doing, Bob?" "Hey, how you doing, John?" Those are the people that we fight for, those are the people that we make decisions for, not for people that take our money and don't want to pay taxes and invest it back into our tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. These, these are the real issues that I, that I, that I referred to a couple of city council These are the issues that we need to be rallying around. I'm so pleased to see everybody who is in the audience today, because the residency issue is, is an important one, and I just want to touch on two things that, that Buddy said, that, that I think he hit the nail on, that nobody's vilifying the fire department. In, in fact, it shouldn't be that difficult, and the fire department should desire to live in the city of Springfield, where they risk their lives on a daily basis. And for the mayor to say that his district chiefs, it would, it would desecrate the department, is an assumption that those district chiefs don't see the vision that he's supposed to be putting forth on a regular basis. What is his vision for the city? I, 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 I just don't, I don't get it. They should want to come to the city of Springfield, because of everything that he is going to do for the city, and is doing for the city, and if that's not happening, that's a problem at the top. When we talk about diversity, there's a lack of diversity, and you are absolutely right, Buddy, there's a lack of diversity at the administrative level, in the police department, in the fire department, and right here at City Hall. The numbers are well over 65% in terms of whites occupying these leadership positions. I, I have a problem with that, and I've done the research. And if you look at the mayor, and who the mayor has appointed during his tenure, he's higher than both the police and the fire department, when it comes to hiring minorities for department head. It's a problem. And residency will help to fix that problem. I, I just want to pick apart, before I close, just, just briefly what the, the mayor has said, he says, this isn't a, he said, according to the city solicitor, it's an attempt to limit the mayor's authority that conflicts with the Plan A strong mayor form of government. We're real quick to follow what the attorney says when it, when it works for us, but when the attorney says that these district chiefs are bound by the residency requirement, all, all, all of a sudden, we have... All of a sudden, we struggle to follow the advice of our attorney. I, I also question, uh, who's the attorney working for? I, I struggle with whether he's working for the mayor, or he's working for the city council. I do know the school committee has a separate, uh, legal council outside of the city, so, so there's a conflict of interest there. And then the mayor also says that, everything being equal, my administration always strives to appoint a qualified Springfield resident. The reason why we need this is because that hasn't occurred. There are qualified Springfield captains on the flagrant. And, and then the last thing that I, that I, I want to make sure that our, our city solicitor is privy to. privy to, if we're going to arbitrate a choose not to enforce these ordinances, it's ultimately going to end its litigation. But there are some people that should be in these positions, that should be bringing the benefits of these high salaries that I, that I saw in Mass Law, who are Springfield legends. One, who I know for sure happens to be a dapper fellow who has passed a district chief test, who is not able to get these positions because there are people from out of town filling these positions. And then lastly, I speak to what we just heard in terms of the fact that there were five, um, there were five cases currently in the Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination, uh, in their office. That, that's a problem. And it's not over residence. Something that we need to strongly look at, the fact that there have been three cases that have already been, uh, uh, three cases that have already been, uh, resolved, in the fa, not in the favor of the city of Springfield, is also a problem. And, and so I hope that we use this passage of the residency requirement to start, to start to explore some of the other issues that are having a significant impact on our city.
Counselor Marcus Williams, and then we'll hear from Counsel Walsh.
We'll do ladies first.
Counselor from Ward Five Yields, Counsel Walsh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I wrote down my thoughts on, on this issue because I think it's important for people to know where, where we stand. And it sounds to me like we have a lot of like-minded thoughts tonight. Residency is a very problematic issue, always has been, has not been uniformly enforced. There are exemptions for major groups, waivers without explanations, and hints of favoritism. And there clearly is a difference of opinion and interpretation with the mayor and the city council, which brings us to tonight's, tonight's vote on overriding the mayor's veto. And because they have different points of view on residency, and I have always supported residency, it does not mean that we are villains. It just means we have a different point of view. And I have to say that, like many of my colleagues who have spoken here tonight, I was quite taken back to read that the city council is vilifying the Springfield Fire Department, so much so, Mr. President, that I actually looked the word up in my Webster's dictionary, which is, of course, published in Springfield. Because that's a very strong word. It means malign, defame, denigrate, libel, slander, tear down, and the root, the root word is, uh, for it, from the Latin, is despicable. So I mean, that's a very strong word, just because we have a different point of view. And to me, it's ironic, when we're talking about different points of view, that yesterday I attended two ceremonies. One was the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, okay? Fifty years for some of these guys that have been in Vietnam. And they talked about their service to their country, also the way they were treated when they came back. But they also talked about their commitment to our way of life and to the defense of our freedoms, one of which is freedom of speech, which we are clearly exercising our rights here. And to suggest that the Springfield City Council does not appreciate and value the service of the Springfield Fire Department is disingenuous. To me, the question I need answered, and I hope Mr. Mahoney, you'll be able to answer this, regarding the deputies, is, as a condition of hire, did they agree to move into the city? If they did, excuse me, they have an obligation... If they have an obligation to do so, that's something I'd like to know. So, I am gonna support the override because I feel if we don't, the issue will die, there'll be no more discussion, but as Counselor Williams suggested and has been said here tonight, with the council supporting the override, we will get to the table and maybe once and for all, we will solve this thorny issue.
Thank you, Counselors. And certainly, the administration recognizes that this is a very complicated and can be a very emotional issue as well. Um, I, I want to assure the council that we've been working hard on this in the administration, and let me tell you how. Since, um, the last amendment was passed by the city council, which the mayor signed off on, in October of 2013, we have hired 582 employees. Of that group, 97.5% of them did not get any type of permanent waiver. So it's 2.5% of that group, that means there's about 15 people that got waivers. A couple of them were part-time reference librarians. I don't think anyone's gonna move or sell their house for a part-time job with the city not knowing how long it's gonna last. Three of them were working at...
Mr. Mahoney, respectfully, the question was about the district chief.
District chief.
And if there was a condition of employment that they accepted when they took the job.
Thank you, I lost my voice there.
No, the, um, the district chiefs have a collective bargaining agreement, they were appointed from a civil service exam.
So it was not a condition of employment when they took the job?
Well, arguably, the city's position is that its residency is under their contract, the union has taken a position that it is not, it's a matter that we're going to solve at the collective bargaining table.
Are there any other... Well, let's, wait a minute, Counsel Marcus Williams' turn. Counsel Williams, Marcus.
Question on that. So 2008...
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I still believe that's 2.5% a little too much. If, I understand the, the difficult nature of, of running a city. I, I understand that, I think we all do. But if you're going to proclaim to be the people's mayor, then you need to stand up when the people need to be represented. And speaking to Counselor Walsh's point about this, this issue of vernacular, language shape is, shapes culture as well, and this is not the first incident where I've had a problem with the way things were described. Talking about how clubs are, are a breeding ground for gangsters, or vilifying the firefighters, there's words in a dictionary to be used, and the right ones need to be used. And it, it stems, you know, it's, it's, it causes racial, racial tension as well as bringing us to this point where we are today. You know, I, before the Holy Old St. Patrick's Parade, a firefighter approached me, talking about how important this issue was to him, the issue of the residency. Now, this is someone who is in, of that department, a very privileged department as well. I spoke to a cop who had the same, same concerns, both Caucasian males approaching myself. So with that being said, I, I think that this is not a black or white issue, it's not a, "I'm poor or I'm rich" issue, this is an issue of Springfield. If you're a resident of Springfield, I don't understand, I do not understand how the mayor could say otherwise. So, with that being said, I, I stand baffled, but I also stand confirmed in my belief that this override needs to happen, and it sends a strong, a strong statement, not only to the mayor of this city, but to the residents who, who need some uplifting, and this is the way to do it.
Sir, in the Red Sox hat, would you mind cracking that door back there? We can't have that door closed for open meeting purposes. Thank you. Counselor Twigs.
Mr. President, some 50 years ago, in this very city, I was very upset on tonight. This is one of the worst nights that I, as a civil rights worker, had to confront. But I wasn't necessarily a civil rights worker, I was an American. And I saw perhaps one of the most distinguished men, citizen of this country gunned down. And I had some very harsh thought in my mind that night about what I would like to do if I knew how to handle a gun. Tonight, I don't wanna have those feelings that I had 50 years ago. Tonight, I'm hoping that I'm gonna leave this city hall with a great feeling. Because we're gonna do our work here tonight. Mr. President, I don't need to remind you, but you and I put a lot of hours in this residential thing. I was very disappointed when it wasn't override before. Now, the people's mayor need to know that the people are here speaking, and if he wants to be the people's mayor, he better listen to what the people are saying. And we're saying that it is time for everybody in this city to get, get an equal chance. Now, we know we've come up against the school department, we know we've come up against the fire department, we know we've come up against the police department, they can come up with all kinds of regulations why they should live in the city. But if you've got a good heart, you know that as many good people living in the city make it a better city. And we're here tonight because we care about this city. We are discussing this tonight because we really care about this city. And we are here tonight to override something that I hope the mayor will try to veto again because we'll override him again. And so I say, I wanna feel good about tonight. I know legally, we can come up with all kinds of reasons why it should not be supported, but it really should be supported. People are depending on us to be the leaders if the mayor's office don't wanna lead. Let's lead tonight.
Counselor Allen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I agree with all my fellow counselors, uh, great words about how important this is tonight. Uh, several of us have worked on this for years, Counsel Walsh and Williams and Rook have been around longer than I have here, but you and I, Counsel Bennett, spent a lot of time and meetings a few years ago on this. We had a moment a few years ago where, um, we had a chance to override the veto and we didn't do it. Uh, we were one vote short. Uh, tonight we have a moment to, to override it, to feel good and to do what is right for the city. Um, I do wanna point out that the fire department issue, while it's related to residency, is not part of this ordinance. This ordinance is about going forward. So, the fire department issue would be handled better if the mayor had appointed a residency compliance commission. And, and then the city council wouldn't have to be doing compliance, the mayor's own compliance commission would be doing it. So, so, well, certainly a related issue, it's not part of this ordinance. This ordinance is about going forward and putting in a good process to give a, more than one shot at Springfield people to get jobs, and that's, the Springfield people should be the people who have the best shot at getting jobs and should get the jobs. Thank you.
Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, you know, I stand in support of this ordinance, um, you know, because as my colleague, Counselor Hurst, said, this is a real issue. This is the real issue that we're talking about. Uh, this is a big issue that could potentially lead to Springfield residents gaining meaningful employment with the city of Springfield, uh, an ordinance that can lead to, hopefully, increasing the tax base in our city, and increasing homeownership in our city, which is, i- it's, it's something that'll have a domino effect, um, in the city of Springfield, and a positive effect for our residents. You know, I wish we didn't have to go down this road. Um, you know, I, I wish that the, the mayor and, and this body were on the same page on this issue, um, but that's not the case. And so, you know, as leaders of the city of Springfield, we have to do what's right for our residents. I, I'm going to be voting in favor of this ordinance tonight. My vote is not a vote against the mayor of the city, my vote is for the people of the city of Springfield, and my vote is for the Springfield residents. I think that this is something that is gonna help the people of our city.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Shea?
Uh, yes, I, I just wanna clarify that the, that the passing and, and supporting of this, um, override, and maybe it's because of what's been in the media, that by passing this, we are not in any way retroactively gonna disrupt anyone that's currently employed for the city. Am I, am I clear on that? That it's just going forward from this day forward, the ability for waivers will be greatly restricted. I mean, I'm always, uh, I have to be honest, I, I, I'm fuzzy on, sometimes on residency when it comes that you've gotta get, make sure the job is filled, but I never waiver on department heads and deputies, whether they're in the management position. Uh, I think that never, never should have been, should be allowed. So as long as we're not retroactively impacting anybody in a current job, which is the impression that I think the media created, especially with the fire department, I think we need to clarify that issue here.
Well, I, I drafted this a couple of years ago, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect any existing employees.
But just, just to follow up with Counsel Walsh, this is a parallel issue, I understand that, but he was about to say something about the deputies that you've been negotiating. Now, the first one was 2008, so you've been negotiating since 2008, you came on 2009.
I did.
So for seven years.
They, they are the last, um, they're the last city contract to be negotiated for the, for the current cycle that we're in. So yes, we've been negotiating with them, uh, throughout. This has not been, um, we had brought the residency issue up as a separate topic from the, from the collective bargaining negotiations.
Now, I remember when Commissioner Conings was hired.
I'm sorry?
Commissioner Conings was hired, was that a condition of hiring to live in the city?
Commissioner Conings?
Yeah.
Conant?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, he lives in the city.
Was that a condition of hiring, sir?
That was part of his contract, yes.
That was a condition of hiring? Because he said, "I would live in the city of Springfield."
Yeah, it was.
But he would have to live, but the district chief don't?
District chiefs have a collective bargaining agreement, and we say that they do. The union has taken the position that they don't. And what we've done is, we're going to...
Okay, let me ask you this, let me cut the chase. So you sit down, you say, "You should live in the city of Springfield." They say, "No, we should live in the city of Springfield because of collective..."
Right, we discussed that the last time that I was here, and what we've, what we're going to do is, we're gonna have to result...
No, 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 I'm saying, you have a conversation. You say you should live in the city of Springfield, so, "Oh, because of our contract, we don't have to."
Right.
So you just, they just, they hired it?
No, we've held it in abeyance while the city council was addressing the issue, because what was happening at the time that we were having the conversation was, the city council was considering grandfathering everyone, and starting from then.
I know, but Mr. Mahoney, you are the legal entity, the personnel, it's your job to enforce residency. You negotiate the contract, not the city contract?
Counselor, when I got here in 2009, there was residency in five contracts. I've tripled it since I got here. It's now in 16 contracts, and that was my work for this administration that got it in there.
Okay, well, how come the district chiefs, you can't get those in?
Because there's a dispute about whether or not the ordinance ever survived during the period of time in the eighties. This goes back, the residence language in their contract goes back to 1977, and this hasn't been enforced since 1992.
Well, I came on the call in 1996, we passed residency. In 1996...
I, I understand.
And it's not been enforced, you should be enforcing residency, I wish you...
And we are at, and we go to the table and we talk to them about it, yes.
So what are we gonna do with these district chiefs?
We're gonna fi, we're gonna figure it out at the collective bargaining table where it's supposed to be decided. It's not supposed to be decided in the city council chambers, it's supposed to be decided at the bargaining table.
I understand.
And then we bring the contract back to you for ratification.
This is gonna be the last thing I'm gonna say, now, the, switching gears, the police department, they just hired the two deputies that are saying they're gonna move into the city. And that's a different contract?
You have, that's under the city ordinance. Under the city ordinance, the promotion has one year to move into the city.
So what about the district chiefs?
The district chiefs are under the collective bargaining agreement, it's separate. Under collective bargaining, collective bargaining is a different animal than non-bargaining.
Well, Mr. President, I hope we pass this tonight, and we have to re-address that because I'm clearly confused.
Counsel Hurst.
My understanding is that they've also said in their contract that they are to abide by the ordinance... by the ordinances that are already in place for the city of Springfield. That's my understanding, but even more to the point, why haven't we negotiated this with any new hires from this point forward? Why haven't we done that already? Right, knowing that we were already in the right? I'm not 100% sure that I agree with you on that.
You can't, you can't negotiate, you can't negotiate individually with district chiefs. Okay? You're not allowed to do that under Master General Act, Chapter 150. That's direct dealing with an individual employee. I can only deal with their collective bargaining agent.
So, you have to deal with them as a whole?
I got to deal with them as a group, yes.
Okay. My position is that they all comply.
Okay, any other, any other counselors?
No.
Okay, seeing none. I know this is a hotly contested issue. I do, however, want to acknowledge the good work of Attorney Mahoney on a lot of these collective bargaining agreements that have come before us in the last few years. The, um, I know, you know, motions run, excuse me, motions run high, but that is, that has been, through the collective bargaining process, by and large, a very good effort. There are obviously some disagreements on some other things, but we appreciate your efforts.
Mr. President? Counsel Ash. In light of the letter received from Attorney Pacula, could we hear from him regarding that letter?
Sure. Mr. Solicitor.
Ed Pacula. I live at the X. Same house I grew up in. Happy to answer any questions. I do want to caution you, though, that there's been a lot of legal opinions floating around lately and if it does end up in some litigation, I really don't want to talk about a lot of our strategy because whatever we do, it sounds like we're going to end up in litigation. I have given you an opinion. I'll be happy to discuss this with you. I don't think it is an issue that comes down to residency versus non-residency. The issue is really one of power between city council and the mayor. There is a valid way to do this and my suggestion is a charter change. If we get behind a charter change, then that's a way to change this. But if it's a fight between power between the mayor and the-
Excuse me, sir.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, everybody, okay? We're going to have some decorum in here. We're going to give the kind city solicitor the floor. Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you. And the council, that's a different issue. As Counselor, Attorney and Counselor, Mr. Mahoney said, we have been working very hard to support residency. The district chiefs, we do have a beef with them over this. We have been trying to impress upon them our legal position that they are bound by their contract to move into the city. That is the city's official position. We support that position, but you can't be dictatorial when you're dealing with collective bargaining. You need to support the process and the process is one where unions come forward and assert their rights and management comes forward and asserts our rights. When we reach an impasse, there are provisions to arbitrate. The last time I was involved in any sort of arbitration that dealt with residency that had come to impasse was the police department and the arbitrator ruled the police officers could move out of the city and they won that through arbitration. That's what's at issue here. We feel that we'd like to continue talking with the union and reach a resolution that everyone can live with. If it does end up with some sort of grandfathering that may be, I'm not saying that's the strategy. All I'm saying is it belongs in the collective bargaining table and not in a city council debate over collective bargaining. When a contract is reached, it's going to come in front of you and if it doesn't have all the terms that are acceptable, then that's something you can vote down. But that's when it ends up in the impasse column. That's when an arbitrator is going to get to rule. Rather than have some arbitrator impose those conditions, we would like to negotiate at the table over those with the unions. We'd like to recognize the right to arbitrate. That's the way the laws work in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and we'd like to discuss that. So, that's the two issues, the district chief and then the conflict between powers.
Thank you. Counselor Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Now, how we got here, and maybe you remember, maybe you don't remember, it wasn't a charter change that waivers got in the ordinance. The control board, it wasn't a charter change, the control board put in waivers. So, you're saying this body can't now override that waiver?
That's correct. And you are correct that at one time, we did have a provision that said, "No waivers." That was difficult, if not impossible, to enforce and I did go back and look. The last residency commission was appointed by Mayor Markel in 1995. Those members of that body expired January 1, 1996 and there has not been any residency commission since then.
I'm talking about the control board putting in waivers.
Correct.
That's how we got to this point, was the control board. Not a charter change. So, you're suggesting we have to do a charter change, they could just do the whim.
Correct.
The city council's in control now, not the control board.
At that time, the control board held the legislative and the executive power under Chapter 169.
But they don't, no.
No.
They don't, this body-
But you don't have the power that the control board has.
Well, I think we have power to deal with ordinances.
That is true.
That's an ordinance.
But you can't where it conflicts with state law and the charter is a state law.
Okay, any other counselors?
Actually, a quick question for Mr. Mahoney.
Mr. Mahoney.
You said you were waiting on the city council before you asked. What exactly were you waiting on us to do? Especially if it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be having, well, litigation in this issue here. What were you waiting?
We had started negotiations with them about residency under their contract and during the process, the city council was considering different versions of ordinances, ordinance changes, including a grandfathering of all employees and starting from that point. So, we were looking at, looking, if the city council is going to do that, our thought at the time was, this will be an easier way for us to negotiate this with the union. We'll hold it in abeyance until the city council takes action on that.
So, why did we move forward with that in 2008, eight years ago? Why wouldn't we have to, at the very least, come to the city council and at least express that that was the-
We shared that with, we shared that with the council, yeah. We certainly did.
Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, the vote comes on overriding the mayor's veto. Two-thirds majority is required, nine votes.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Rook.
No.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Counselor Ash.
No.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Fenn.
Yes, more in session, veto is overturned. All right, Mr. Clerk, next item, forgot where we are here. Why don't we go back to item number 12?
That was yours. That was yours, 12.
Item number 12, sponsored by Counselor Rook, the poet laureate ordinance.
Counsel Rook.
Mr. President, this is a simple ordinance asking that we establish a poet laureate in the city of Springfield to support the arts, accommodate the arts in the city.
Any questions from the council? Any discussion? Okay, all of those in favor of passage of this ordinance for first step to committee on ordinances, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. This item takes first step. We will take second and third step at our first meeting in May. May 2nd, that's our next regular meeting. Okay, May 2nd. Okay, item number 14, Mr. Clerk.
Item number-
That matter is held in committee, excuse me. That one's not going to get called. Counsel Ramos has asked to hold that matter in committee, Mr. Clerk. Item number 15.
Item number 15, this is a special act to convert parkland and replace parkland at Ruth Elizabeth Park under Article 97.
Mr. Signoli, how are you tonight?
Having a ball, thank you, counselors. Chris Signoli, 89 Bennington Street, Springfield, Mass.
Hoorah.
The, the city of Springfield and the Department of Public Works and the Engineering Department has been working on a project for the reconstruction and realignment of Central Street in the city since late 2010. Following the tornado of 2011, the rebuild Springfield plan was put together and a number of public meetings and presentations were held throughout the city, in the downtown area, Maple High, Six Corners, East Forest Park, 16 Acres, et cetera, on pieces of the plan as we move forward. In 2013, the city made application to HUD for disaster recovery money, DR money. The city was awarded at that time about $21.9 million. A piece of that money was set aside for the Central Street reconstruction project and in 2014, we started the planning phase of that project and throughout the HUD process, in order to get the funds, we had a number of presentations that we had to do throughout the communities to present what the projects were going to be, not just the Central Street project, but the other projects that we were doing in the city. As we've been moving through the process, the realignment of Central Street in the area between Hancock and Allen and Walnut Street, we've developed all the designs for that at this point and one piece of the project requires that we do a strip-taking of the Ruth Elizabeth Park that is adjacent to Hickory Street, approximately five feet wide and a couple hundred feet long in order to accommodate the right-of-way. Adjacent to the project are three properties that at this point, the city is intending on going through an eminent domain process to take properties. There is also another property adjacent to Ruth Elizabeth Park that is city property and what the intent is, is that the land that is being taken by the roadway will be replaced in general by the one parcel that is city-owned to be turned into parkland. The other two parcels that are intended to be taken through eminent domain will also be included into the park and not necessarily as part of this project, but a second phase of it will be to begin the master plan process on Ruth Elizabeth Park and playground. What we are looking for tonight, counselors, is the approval to go to the next step at the state level. The Article 97 process requires that the city council approve the first step so that we can start the land process that has to do with just the transfer of land with regard to the park. Before the meeting tonight, you had a number of the residents who were coming up before you with regard to eminent domain taking. That is not an item that is for vote tonight, that will be voted on at a different meeting. The state process is a longer process, so we wanted to get that going so that the next step with regard to the residents who had some of these questions, that we can begin to answer with regard to relocation, costs, appraisals, et cetera, on their land. So, what we need to do at this point is get the approval of the city council to move forward through the Article 97 process at the state. And I'd like to turn to Pat to see if he has anything to add to it.
Thank you, Pat. Cell and Director Parks and Buildings, I'm going to give you these drawings.
Thank you.
This is a unique opportunity for the city of Springfield and this neighborhood. Approximately 10 years ago, under the leadership of Ernie Smith, the former park commissioner, we developed a master plan for Ruth Elizabeth Park and it was the dream of the neighborhood to have a full-size football field, 5A, wanted to practice their games here and develop a parking area. And with the tornado and further master planning, it came the opportunity to realign Central Street and to basically redefine the corner at the intersection that you see here at One Allen Street. And these are what I consider once-in-a-hundred-year type projects for the city that improves, I think, the lives of the residents and I just want to point out, a similar project was done about 110 years of Van Horn Park when they took the two houses on the corner on Army Street and actually, the bricks from those homes were built to build some of the buildings in Forest Park. And you can imagine now, we have tennis courts there and that's been open space for 100 years and it's been well-served by the city. So, I just leave you with that analogy, that I think the better good of the city will be served with this project and it will basically allow us to move forward with the master plan that we set out to do over 10 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I guess I can ask you, Pat, is there a timeline on this project?
We hope that DPW could start this in about six to eight months, Chris? And that we are looking for different grants to do the park improvements and we have FEMA money to start the park improvement projects.
And in order for you to do that, it's contingent on a vote tonight?
That's correct, as far as, so we can move forward and move forward with the land so we can properly plan the master plan for Ruth Elizabeth.
Thank you.
I'm going to respectfully ask my colleagues to send this to committee. This plan, or at least some of us in the neighborhood, obviously have known it about it for years. You've heard testimony earlier today from the people who would directly be impacted because they will be losing their property, that they, the process that has led to them to be made aware hasn't run as flawlessly as we would like to think government should run. That being said, the plan was unveiled just recently. This plan, since it was planned, it was a public meeting. The request for a public meeting or the unveiling of the plan started by me personally probably nine months or so ago and the angst that has, that you heard earlier in the testimony was because the landowners were made aware that their properties were in line to be taken. I'm not questioning the validity or the value of the project or whether or not it's something that should happen. What I'm respectfully asking is, is this goes to committee to allow for the neighborhood council of Maple High, Six Corners and possibly the neighborhood council of Old Hill, which is the up, which is the adjoining neighborhood that will be impacted by this project, for them to have an opportunity, because generally what we do is, is that we allow the neighborhood councils to confer and then to make a recommendation of support, either for or against, which doesn't preclude us from voting against the project or in favor of the project regardless of what the council of the neighborhood may decide to do. The neighborhood council has not had this on its agenda of its actual council. The meeting that was held was a city of Springfield's community engagement meeting, but it was not a meeting and an agenda item of the Maple High, Six Corner Neighborhood Council. So, I'm respectfully asking that this goes to committee. The second Tuesday of this month in April is the scheduled meeting of Maple High, Six Corners. I intend to make sure that is on the agenda and allow for discussion of those who would choose to be in attendance. At that point, we will may ask, I will respectfully ask that council their opinion and to create a vote either of support or against and I would like to be able to come back and report to you the decision or the conclusion of that committee in that meeting. So, once again, I respectfully ask that this committee send this to committee.
Okay. Motion made by Counsel Edwards to send the matter to committee, seconded by Counsel Ramos. Any discussion of the motion?
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Sure.
That if it is sent to committee, a lot of the questions that are being asked cannot get answered until this gets submitted to the state. We can discuss the project, but in moving forward, a lot of the concerns about the residents, we can't move forward with the appraisal, the final appraisal process, the relocation questions, the business relocation questions. We need to do this step first.
Well, that's part of the problem, and not to be argumentative, but that's been the concern of the people who own the property is, is that they've known for nine months or a year that this is coming. I got, soon as the first business owner or property owner got the first letter of intent of the city to take their property, they contacted me and I have not been able to give them any answers except you need to go hire a lawyer, not a criminal one, but one knows about land-taking. And, and this is what has generally been said all along through this process, we can't give you any answers, we can't show you the plan, we can't answer your questions and we're now at a point where obvious- And we're now at a point where obviously these people have gotten some type of notice that they know it's coming, and they're losing their property, but they still can't get the answers. And what you're saying is that we have to approve the land-taking, which is--
You're not approving land-taking.
We're approving the taking of parkland.
No, no.
Parkland?
No.
If we don't approve the land-taking, your project can't go to the next step, am I correct? And I, or maybe I'm, I'll shut up, please, explain it to me.
What you're approving us is to be able to send it to the state for their review and approval of the process that we're trying to complete. We then have to come back to the city council at a later date for the actual land-takings. This allows us to move forward at the state level because of the requirement of the state land to get their approval to allow us to do it. Then we are able to move forward with the processes for the actual land-takings that we have to do, and that includes the park, that has to then get voted on at the city council at a later date.
My mother always said I wasn't the brightest bulb on the shelf, and I'd probably have been a nightlight. But I'm still not understanding this, because it seems like, once we start down the road of approving it, then how do we pull it back?
You can vote no at a later date, when the land-takings come in front of you.
It's a flawed process, and you've heard me say that on other things recently related to the Sheriff's Department and other things. And I'm going to probably say it again when the registry comes, because you ain't here, no hearings on that either. But this is a flawed process, because we should be able to answer questions before we start down the road of asking for our approvals. And if it's not the case, then it is not the case. But I will not withdraw my request from the council that this goes to committee.
Okay, Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, on that motion, just have a couple of questions for Chris. What are you, if this is sent to committee, then how does that delay the process?
Until it goes to the state, we can't move forward with the final appraisal process, the relocation. A lot of the questions that the citizens and the residents and the business and property owners are asking us, we can't do until we know that the state is moving forward with their review on it. Because we don't want to move forward with it, because if we don't know that the project is going to be approved by the state to get into their hands, the timing of the process, doing it, going through the process now, just doesn't do us any good. So we need to be able to at least get the state process going so that we can then start going to the process of getting all the answers that a lot of the owners are looking for. They've received some of the preliminary answers, but we need to be able to get them issues such as exact relocation, relocation cost, appraisals of their property so that they can begin to review it. And at this point, we can't do that until we have this approval to send it to the state.
So essentially, you're looking for authorization to get the specifics for the project? I mean, essentially, that's what you're--
Yeah, technically, we want to go to the state, but this allows us to get the rest of the process moving at the same time, yes. Because what I was trying to get at with Counselor Edwards is that if we go to a meeting in a month, we will not have, if this isn't approved, we won't be able to give anybody any of the answers, because we haven't been able to move forward with the process.
Will you then, if we pass this tonight, will you still be able to honor Counselor Edwards' request to come into--
To a point, because we'll have some of that information, we'll be, you know, I mean, next, a week from Tuesday, Counselor Edwards, a week from tomorrow?
Yes.
We'll have some information, but I don't know how much we'll have at that point. But we'll be able to at least move forward with the individual property owners on that to get them their answers.
And how long do you anticipate this will take? How long of a process is this?
Sixty, Pat just said sixty to ninety minutes.
When do you think you'll have an order for eminent domain in front of us?
That wouldn't come in front of us until that was completed, that whole process there was completed. But all of the information would be in the business owners' residents' hands well, well before that.
Can you kind of just explain to the residents that are here for this issue? What does that process look like? When is your department going to have communication with them and start that, the process of talking about the numbers and relocation and all of that?
We, when I say "we," the city, it was not done through the DPW. The city notified them over a year ago that we were looking at their property for possible taking on the project. So I know through the Law Department and through Tina Quagliato, the Disaster Recovery Office, and their consultant for relocation, there have been different communications with different owners, different amount of times throughout the process. We needed to get the design to such a point, because as we go to the state, just saying to the state, "Yeah, we're going to be taking a few feet here, and we're going to be needing a few feet over there," they need exact. So we've been advancing the plans to the point where we knew exact dimensions, exact locations, to be able to get that done. And that's what we've completed in the last couple of months. And the first thing that we did before we came through this process is that we were required by HUD that we had to have the public hearing. So we had the public hearing in the beginning of March to put this on the agenda here for the city council for April.
I mean, I think the biggest concern is that miscommunication between the department and the residents.
Right.
If you were able to kind of ease their concerns and smooth it out a little bit, let them know that there is going to be a process here. You are going to get the information, and so I don't think there will be an objection.
No, we've met with them, I know I've been involved at least with one meeting with each of them. The legal process, I really haven't been involved with myself. But I know that there's been, you know, I know with one of the owners, we've had at least three or four meetings with them. But again, you know, there's not a lot of information to give them at this point, because once we go through the appraisal process, obviously, once numbers start going back and forth, we start looking at alternate properties for them, et cetera. That process, you know, we don't want to do that. We didn't want to do that, say, six months ago, and then it fails here. Then we've done a lot of work for nothing. So that's why we wanted to take this step by step.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it really seems as if, I don't think the delay is necessary. I think they're taking the right steps, and we're just basically all the right to move forward. But I defer to Counselor Edwards, it is his word, he knows what's best for his word. And so if he wants to send it to committee, I would support that.
Well, I actually have a question, because one of the, I'm a little still confused, because is it a can't, or is it a want? The thing is, is can you do this, or do you want to? I mean, I can understand both sides of a coin, which suggests to me is that it moves the city to not be, give out the information to this point until you get the appraisals done or get to a certain amount of town. But that doesn't actually alleviate the concerns of the property owners themselves, which is what their angst is, as you say, for the whole year. They've known this has been coming. And the negotiation of price on what somebody's value in property, I don't think that's something we'll be negotiating here in the chamber. That's something you'll negotiate privately with them, and then at some point, once you come to a conclusion, you'll come for us before approval. What we, or what I'm understanding from these people is that they don't, they're not having, they're still questioning the need for, can the, my colleague said it earlier, can the road be shifted?
Right.
Is it really unnecessary to take the properties out? Those are the types of questions they're asking. They're not even asking me at this point, how much am I going to get for my property? They're asking, why is it that you can't shift this this way? I made a request to, you know, they're moving the church, a brick church. This house is a two-story brick house. I made inquiries as to why we couldn't take a parcel, there's a vacant city parcel within very small, close distance of this man's house and residence where he's lived and raised his children. Why can't we spend the money instead of tearing the house down and move the house to a site very close by? Nobody from the city's contacted me back to answer that question. So, I mean, the attorney for MGM was at least gracious enough to call me back and give me somebody who was an engineer that I could talk to. But I've made requests to at least two, three people in your departments, and nobody's called me back. So I can't even answer that question, because I broached that subject with the property owner, at least one of them. I've heard from other property owners, without saying any names, that, you know, they may, depending on what the numbers are, yeah, they don't want to leave, but they may leave. But their real concern is, is where do you take me, and where can I be and still have viable business and afford to pay the taxes at my new site? You know, can we use TIPS? Because we use the TIPS to the big, big corporations and companies that come to the city. Can we apply a TIP for a small business owner who might get moved in from one tax area to a higher one? Can we give him some type of break on taxes for five years while he reestablishes his business? Those are the types of questions that can be answered, at least I thought we could answer if we had a proper forum. But the part of the problem is that up until very recently, there was no meeting, and there was no communications until HUD required you to put out the meetings and have a public meeting. But these same residents were reading in the newspaper and the legal notices, things about impacts, no environmental impact, or limited environmental impact, will not have any economic impact in the community. And these are in the small, small print in the paper. I'm not even talking about the ones that don't have my glasses on to read. These are the teeny, teeny things that I was surprised they even noticed. They're calling me and saying, "Well, did you read it?" I'm like, "No, who reads that? I couldn't see that." So that's what I'm saying, is like, I'm not trying to subvert your process, but you suggested that it is not, I can't, or maybe we don't want to, and maybe that's the best way for the city to do business. But it's not the best way for the people whose property, because when, I don't care if, I've lived through the tornado, my house was damaged in the tornado. Trees all around me were down, and I had to climb over trees to get to my back door, because we couldn't get through my front door. What I learned through that process, if I owned a matchbox and I called it home, and somebody, it got destroyed, it had value to me. And it's the same thing. We don't, you know, whether this is a good business, this one's a good business, this is good commercial property or whatever, these are these people's property. And you're talking about one of the most fundamentally controversial things that occur in this country is when you take in somebody's property. And if you can't have a vehicle for them to get the information that they need to have some degree of confidence, and I'm not talking about the negotiated numbers, I'm just talking about the process. And I'm just, essentially, what I'm asking for is to have a two-week period, or at least another week, so that the members that were elected duly by the neighborhood council to represent them and to be a voice for them to conduit, send their information back to us or to me as their elected city councilor, to give them enough time to have a meeting in the confines of their neighborhood council meeting on their agenda and to discuss this issue, is this a good thing for our neighborhood? And that's essentially what I'm asking for, so.
And Counselor, that can happen, but at the same time, this vote tonight is basically stating that we're in favor of a master plan for Ruth Elizabeth Park, that it makes these improvements that are presented in the drawing that I passed out to you. But those meetings that you suggested can still happen, and we would still be well within the timeframe. So I would strongly suggest that we move forward with the master plan for Ruth Elizabeth with the state to get their approval, but at the same time, get the answers that you need for your constituents.
Well, you know, Pat, we've been asking for, even before the tornado, we wanted to new Ruth Elizabeth, Elizabeth Park. We wanted a new bookings before the tornado.
And it's been part of the, and it's been part of the master, open space plan.
Right, but it's, so nobody's saying we don't want improvements to the park. What we're saying is that we want the liberties of homeownership or property ownership not to be trampled through this process. And those, I mean, there's only a few people that are involved--
And there is a legal process, and they will, I've been through this four times in my thirty-year career with the city, so they will be dealt with legally and respectfully during that process. The laws are there on their side.
Counselor Hurst.
Yes, Pat, have the residents had any input in terms of the design itself?
As I said, this is a schematic plan from what we did over ten years ago with the residents. And-- I see Bud shaking his head, "No." But it was about ten years ago when we started with the open space plan that we submitted to the state to have improvements made. And I think I went to the tornado meetings with Chris, and we spoke about park improvements at that time as well.
Doesn't it make sense to possibly have a more updating meeting with the residents to find out what's being--
What I wanted to add to that, Counselor, between late two thousand and eleven and early two thousand and fourteen, we had over eight meetings with the residents to present the concepts for the roadway design. It was fully supported by the Maple High, Six Corners, fully supported by Old Hill in two different scenarios. One, in order to complete the Rebuild Springfield report. And number two, for their sign-on that we required in order to make the final application to HUD. So during that period of time, at least eight public meetings were held in different areas. But I know both of those entities signed off on it. At the public hearing that we had back in March, a couple of people who were involved with the Maple High, Six Corners at that time made that notice at the meeting that, yes, this has come before us a number of times in the past, we've seen it, we've reviewed it. It's been signed off on by both entities at that time. Now, some people who are involved with those neighborhood councils at this point have different feelings on it, which is one of the reasons why we had the public hearing. However, it's been before those, you know, the public hearings, we've done at least eight of them since late two thousand and eleven.
So this final design has been presented to--
For that, no, that's just, that picture there is a concept of the entrance of the park. The roadway design has been developed to a point where we know exact limits of required land-taking, especially for the park, because we have to exactly come up with exact limits, square footage, et cetera. So that's where the point that we're at now. What you're seeing there, and I don't want you to speak for Pat, but that's basically a schematic of what the entrance at that corner would be proposed to look like once we move forward with the design, or once Pat moved forward with the design on the park side of it.
How's this any different than the redesign of the X?
The redesign of the X is--
Which I know we've already had a number of meetings on.
Correct, and the redesign of the X more so is a, I want to say more of a traffic flow project and significant improvements for pedestrian and bicyclists. Now, in this project, along the Central Street corridor, all of the new intersections that we're putting in, the new signalization, we're having, you know, top-to-bottom pedestrian access and everything. The difference between the X is probably simply because of the volumes that we're dealing with in those particular areas. We are not doing, we will be doing some roadway realignment on the X on existing roadways. We're not anticipating on the X having to take complete properties based upon the alignment and the roadway widths that we have out there. So we're basically kind of moving some traffic around here. The roadway alignment issues that we have on this, you know, the Hickory Street corridor is extremely narrow. And so in order to make it really, you know, meet the requirements for the two-way traffic, we have to do some widening. And, you know, the properties that we've been talking about here, you know, we can widen to the other side of the street, but instead of dealing with three properties, we're probably dealing with six. So what we started to do was look at a bunch of alternates that we wanted to look at and determine what was going to have the least amount of impact. If we stayed in the existing Central Street corridor, it was probably going to be about seven businesses and homes that we were going to be dealing with for either partial taking or full taking. So, you know, we basically came up with the alignment that was going to be the least impactful. To tell you the truth, the last thing we really want to do is go through the state process with regard to parkland, but it ends up being the least impactful for residents and citizens and business owners in the neighborhood. So, you know, we kind of picked the lesser of all evils and able to move forward with this project. And again, what we really are looking for today is, this is not an approval on the land-takings, it's just to allow us to get to the next step so that we can start answering some of the questions for the residents.
Thank you. My real concern is really with the public input, and I defer to Counselor Edwards. If you want to have a number of meetings prior to us passing this, I would certainly support your motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think it's been said, I'm going to support Counselor Edwards. This says special act to convert land. Now, they're going to tell you about Ruth Elizabeth. That plan was two thousand and ten. This is a different plan. Pat could have done that Ruth Elizabeth without this plan. This takes parkland, takes a house and swaps a house. That plan Ernie Smith advanced, Mr. Sullivan, was ten years ago. You had a plan, and how were you going to do it?
You can't do, that's the whole problem, Counsel, we couldn't implement, they wanted the parking, and with, we couldn't do the parking without taking this corner. So that's why the timing of this--
In ten years, you couldn't take, that's right. But I agree with Counselor, Mr. President, this is a completely different plan. Ten years ago, the tornado, and they said to you under their own public testimony that, this is what they presented to the neighbors, not like at the X or East Forest Park, that here's what our plan, you can have public input. There's no public input. People are not just worried about, concerned about getting paid for their property. Some people don't like this plan. The Old Hill Neighborhood Council, Barbara Gresham is the new president, was at the meeting, and the public testimony told you that the old neighborhood council did not vote for that. She's only been president two years. They met with people who were on the Old Hill Council Committee. They never met with the Old Hill Neighborhood Council, at their office, presenting the plan. I don't know if they ever met with Counselor Edwards, to the council, not this public meeting, bring all these big shots in from Chicago and New York, and they present this plan and overwhelm people with all these pictures. I think it makes sense to go back to committee, let them meet, go and talk with the people. That plan that you're seeing now, I saw that plan at the committee meeting. I don't think the residents have seen that. The residents in a whole have seen that. We saw it Friday, for the first time. So they're saying, yeah, special act to convert parkland. Once they convert the parkland, they take the sliver, that starts the process. It starts the ball rolling for them to do the Central Street project, which on the public testimony, it's going to affect a lot of minority businesses and business owners that, you know, we need to just space them. Not saying I'm against it, saying they need to have some kind of input. Need to go back to the neighborhood.
Counselor Marcus Williams.
Very briefly, I thank Mr. Signoli, we have to really tread lightly with this issue. The reason I say that is because it's like, this body voting, the site plan review, knowing that the host-- site plan review, knowing that the host community agreement was coming up for MGM, but having no public speaker. That's the message it sends. And with this next step comes the excitement, comes the anxiety for those who maybe not be in agreement for it. But I mean, you have to consider that. And the repercussions of that, for a community as crippled as this one already, is a result can be crime, it can be desperate measures, desperate times cause for desperate measures. So you, I just think that, with that being said, I support Counselor Edward's motion to refer this to committee, as well as, I mean, I don't think anyone better would know that than, you know, than him, in regards to bidification efforts. So, I mean, I, I think this, we need to take some time. I understand the processes might, might be under a tight, tight deadline, as you say. But the residents need to know what's going on, and that's, that's all I can say.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor made by Counsel Edward. It was seconded by Counsel Ramos. Counsel Ramos, did you want to withdraw your second, or do you?
Second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the motion? All those, Counsel Walsh.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to clarify something, that you said that this has to go to the, to the state, correct?
Correct.
And the state will decide whether or not we take the next step.
Correct.
So the delay, what, the impact of the delay is what? Because it seems to me that we could still send this to the state, and people could still have the community meetings.
Correct. And one of the difficulty is that if it doesn't go to the state, we are not and can't move forward with a number of the issues with regard to relocation, final appraisals, that we will be able to give some of the residents and businesses the answers. We'll go to the meeting next, if this doesn't pass, we'll go to the meeting next week. We won't be able to tell them any more information we told them at the last meeting, because we won't be able to do any more work.
There's no...
Now, at the meeting that we had on Friday, I mean, people were concerned about what value their business and their home would get.
Correct.
And what would happen if there were, there were takings. But you're saying that...
It's just going to delay that process to get those answers that much longer.
You're not going to be able to answer that.
Correct.
So, I mean, it seems to me that the, before you have all these meetings on how much you're going to get in eminent domain, you've got to know whether or not you can do the project.
Correct.
And you won't know if you do, you can do the project until the state reviews it.
Correct.
But, but, Mr. President, this is not about eminent domain, Counsel. This is about...
Well, it will lead to eminent domain.
No, no, I'm, I'm not even going to talk about...
Eminent domain, it will lead to that. But before you know whether or not you can do it, I think we should find out from the state if it's a go.
But people have a problem with the project itself. Let the residents look at the project, let the Old Hill Neighborhood Council vote, "Yes, we like it," or "No, we don't." Let Counsel Edward's old, his council voted, "Yes, we like it, no, we don't." Not about eminent domain. We can still, they can still come back to us, we're not bound by their votes. This has nothing to do with eminent domain. I want to be clear on that. Some folks don't like this. And like Counsel, it was Twigs, said, "Maybe they can modify this project." But what, at the rate he's going, he's not taking any public input. They're just saying, "Here, here's the plan, here's the goal, you vote for that, people. That's the plan." And we can't deviate from that one ounce, one iota. That's what they're saying.
I, I...
Very quick, very, I just want to point out one last thing. Most, very recently, we had a very controversial issue come to our neighborhood, which was the, the assigning of the alcohol center on Mill Street. My Neighborhood Council never voted for it. They never voted against it. The meeting that I had tried to schedule for us to give consideration as a Neighborhood Council was being organized on that Monday. And Tuesday morning, the Republican reported that the center had already signed a 10-year lease. So that's part of why I'm respectfully asking for us to have a meeting, because we should, as a council, get a chance to vote on something before things go to a point where it doesn't matter whether we vote for it or against it. We found out through that process that our voice didn't matter. It didn't matter, and, and we're not even questioning the facility or quality of the work, or who, how, the need for, opiate intervention. We're, as a Neighborhood Council, never got a chance to say, to discuss it, and decide as a council, can I get a vote? How many of you are in favor, how many of you are against? It was in the paper, 10-year lease has been signed. I've got neighbors who don't want to speak to other neighbors. I've been vilified in my community because they, I was on the wrong side of neutrality. And this is the same type of situation, is that I'm just, and it doesn't have to go to a committee, a City Council Committee. I'm actually essentially asking for a one week and a day. One week and a day, because one week and a day from today, the Neighborhood Council will meet, or have met, and by Wednesday morning, or even by 10 o'clock, 9:30 on Tuesday night of next week, I'll be able to say, "Neighborhood Council said they were in favor of it. Neighborhood Council said they were against it." So it's not a question of, you know, we're just, but we don't even get a chance to vote on these things. And that's what I have to talk about, a flawed process. Once again, we're going to ram something down in my throat in my neighborhood, and this supposed group of people who take the time once a month to come out and have a meeting to discuss neighborhood issues, because they live there, because they know who shoots what and who sells what, they don't get a voice.
I still, I, one item I have to say, the Neighborhood Councils voted over two years ago to support...
I didn't vote on it. I do not remember. I'm not meaning to be disrespectful. I do not remember voting for this particular plan. Yes, there was a lot of shirets, and there was a lot of planning and a lot of things. They also said they wanted Mills River Clean. They said they wanted bicycle trip. They said they wanted all types of housing. They said they wanted a CBS. We laughed, remember that? Remember the time they wanted CBS and down there at Central Street? We wanted the One Stop Plaza closed. People were complaining about the bums and the drunks that be out there harassing the kids when they go to school in the morning. That's what people were saying. We ain't getting that either. But these are the things, so I do not remember voting on, this is the plan, where we're going to take out these three businesses, and we're going to take this commercial property in order to widen Hickory Street. It might have been something that was discussed as part in general, because you're going to have the same discussion in next month, when you start talking about doing the rotary at Six Corners. And assume you're going to say at that point, we approve that plan as well. This is not the case. All I'm respectfully asking is, is that one week and a day.
Okay. I'm going to call the question. So there's a motion made to send the matter to committee, made by Counsel Edward, properly seconded by Counsel Ramos. All those in favor of the motion to committee on maintenance and development, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The ayes have it. Matter is referred to the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee. Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Oh.
Where am I here? I am on item number seventeen.
Number seventeen. This is a resolve for moratorium on historic demolition, sponsored by Counsel Bud Williams.
Okay. Counsel Williams.
And Counsel Hurst, and I think Counsel Williams.
Okay. And also sponsored by Counsel Hurst and...
Counsel Williams.
And Counsel Marcus Williams, Mr. Clerk.
Can I, can I defer my time to Bob McCarron to explain this? It's very self-explanatory.
All those in favor of suspension of rules to hear from Mr. McCarron, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Ayes have it. Bob?
What's your questions, Counsel?
So we would like for you to summarize the resolve regarding the...
Demo.
Demo prohibition on historic demolition.
Well, the, the resolve is crafted by Counsel Williams, is, is a request to the mayor to have 160-day moratorium on municipal demolition of buildings which are either on the National Register of Historic Places, or are eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. And that during this moratorium, the city should make efforts to find alternative funding sources, rather than simply have demolition money available.
Any questions from the council? Counsel Shea?
I just want to add, what was the length of time?
180 days is part of what is Counsel Williams's resolve?
Where it's worded here, it looks like it had a date.
Oh. Any other counselors? Okay, seeing...
Go ahead.
Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of passage of the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I am opposed. Ordinance, resolve passes. Okay. Mr. Clerk, item number... Okay, let's take third step on item number 11, Mr. Clerk, while we have Mr. McCarron.
On the third step, for the ordinance establishing the Bliss House Historic District.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council? Does everybody understand this? This is just the house owned by Mr. McCarron. Okay, roll call, Mr. Clerk. Third step to be ordained.
Yes.
Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Counselor Twiggs.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Orlando Ramos.
Yes.
Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Counsel Ash.
Absent.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Counsel Fenton.
Yes. More insufficient, Historic District is approved. Okay. All those in favor of suspension of rules to hear, item number 18. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 18, Mr. Clerk, under suspension.
Item number 18 is a petition from the Old Hill Neighborhood by Columbia Gas.
Can you, that, that, that sounds...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's for the location of an, of an underground gas main in the Old Hill Neighborhood. It's going to cross King Street, Merrick Avenue, Nelson Avenue, and Hancock Street.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 19, all those in favor of suspension of rules to hear it, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay. Last one, item number 19.
Item number 19, the acceptance of a crisis intervention grant for $275,000.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Didn't realize you were down there.
Jerry McCaffrey, Director of Housing. This is a grant from the State of Massachusetts, $275,000. The city is essentially operating as a pass-through. The money is going to Gandara Center, Catholic Charities, and HAP Housing. It is to help people prevent homelessness or get new housing to end their homelessness. The majority of the money goes to rental assistance.
Any questions from the council? Counsel Marcus Williams.
As an employee of HAP Housing, I will have to recuse myself.
Okay. So noted. We thank you again, Ms. McCaffrey, for waiting. All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 275 approved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, any more business?
I have no more business for this body.
Okay, everybody, one final public announcement. I am calling a special meeting for Thursday at noon. There is one grant, we were not able to take it under suspension tonight because of state law. It's for the police. It's very important. They need it by Friday. I'm calling a special meeting for Thursday at noon. If things go according to plan, I will be out of the state. So I'm asking Counsel Ramos to chair that meeting, and we're going to call it for noon on Thursday. It will be one item. It will be very quick, I promise you. Counsel Williams?
How many votes?
Seven. And that's the sign-in sheet we sent around, so if, you know, everybody that said they could make it attends, we'll have the seven votes we need. Okay? Otherwise, this body will stand adjourned until our hearings meeting, which will be held on... April 25th is the hearings meeting. Good night.